The panelists, so I'm assuming, I'm assuming I can share my screen and look at that, I can. Great. Well, I'm just going to jump right in here. It is a pleasure to see all of you. I'm really not going to spend time, waste time introducing myself. You'll learn about me as we go on and um in a moment here. Whoops, look at that. That is so funny. I had the last slide up. Okay, we're done.
I like that.
I told you we get done.
Fastest retreat ever.
I'm glad Mary's laughing. That's a good, that's a good sign. So we are on time. Thank you for all being here. Preliminaries, one of the rules is that the facilitator, one of my rules is the facilitator never has the first or the last word. So I'm going to ask our mayor to kick us off this morning.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Well, welcome everybody and a special welcome to our staff who are joining us for the whole day for the first time and we are so pleased to have you all here. We really are. I would like to welcome you again, Andrew. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your expertise and we're looking forward to facilitating this retreat. I'd like to welcome any members of the public who are joining us. I think I saw a couple maybe in the attendees section. Oh, and I see Laura has her hand raised to come over as a panelist.
And council member Storset is not here yet.
He is not here yet, so we will recognize him when he comes. If someone maybe wants to give him a text or maybe he's having trouble logging in.
He and I talked about it yesterday and he said, see you at nine o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Well, maybe he's still on Alaska time or wherever he just got back.
He was in Florida.
Oh, Florida. We'll see. There you go. There you go. Um, so thank you to the public that have joined us. We appreciate you being here and your desire to participate, watch or to watch what's going on here at the retreat. I would like to remind the public that there will be no public comment during the retreat, but we do value your feedback very much. And if you have comments or questions, anything you would like to ask, please email the mayor and council email address and I will spell that out. It's mayor and A N D. Mayor and council at gig harbor wad dot gov. And we would love to hear your thoughts and any comments that you have on our retreat today. A couple housekeeping items I wanted, because this is such a long session, I want to let council and staff know if you need to get up and take a stretch break, wiggle break, restroom break, whatever kind of break, just a free coffee break. Just get up and do it. You know, if we were in person, we'd have people just kind of getting up and down as needed. No need to stop the meeting or ask for a recess or anything like that. Just turn your camera off if you feel it would be distracting, go and run and do your thing and come back and that's all good. So we won't, we won't. If you disappear for an hour, I'm going to call you though. So just so you know. But keep in mind though, we do have some specific interactive group activities that we're going to be doing. So kind of watch the agenda and try not to disappear during those, but in between times, just feel free to take quick breaks. And then, as you know, we will have our breaks during the day. I want to give a special shout out to Laura Pettit, our tourism and communications director for seeing my lunchbox vision to fruition and delivering everybody's lunches to them. I am so appreciative of your help in putting those together and getting them all delivered. And I think everybody will appreciate those as well. You're awesome. And I recognize Seth Storset has joined the call. Thank you, council member Storset. Just a little bit about the theme, you know, Andrew kind of asked me sort of put me on the spot in a good way to come up with a theme for this retreat. And the only thing, the thing that's coming to my mind is my, my personal motto for what I have come into this office with this year, which is building bridges, not walls. I've just seen over the last couple of years, especially with COVID, there's just been a lot of walls that have been put up, walls between citizens and government, walls between government and citizens, walls between staff and council, walls between council administration, just, just kind of a bunch of different things and issues and and we've all had a lot of stress and we've all had a lot of frustration and just annoyance that we're still in COVID. And, and, and there's, there's just been walls that have been put up. And so I would like to, as a team, work on breaking those walls down and then using that material and building bridges instead. And so not completely forgetting where we were, not, not erasing the past, but let's just, let's take the good things that we've experienced in the last two, three years, and then let's, let's build some bridges with those and try to bridge some gaps that I think are, are there. So to wrap up some of the goals, I've already shared these with you that I'm hoping to accomplish at the retreat. Number one, that we know each other better at the end of the day than we do right now going in, that we have had a lot of laughs and that we have come away with a specific set of goals and a vision in mind for the next two years and that two years minimum and, and beyond, and that we feel good about the direction that we're going in as a team. And so those are just a few of the, the goals that I would like to see us achieve throughout this retreat. And I have every confidence that we will do that. And with Andrew's help, it will definitely be fun and we will definitely laugh. And so I'm looking forward to hearing all of your, your thoughts and, and opinions and your truth, your truths and lies about yourself. Can't wait to hear about that. So thank you again. Welcome to all of you and I'm excited to get this retreat started. So Andrew, I'll turn it back over to you.
My apologies, I couldn't unmute. Yeah, my button got stuck. Anyway, thank you, mayor, for setting us on a very positive path. I am going to just take a moment to review the agenda. I know that you all have this. I'm not going to get into detail into each exercise until we get to that exercise. Some of them have a lot of moving parts. And I don't know about you all, but I can only remember so many things at a time. So just very quickly, Tracy said that we're going to have some fun. We've got some games. We're going to start the morning with the game and we're going to start our afternoon with the game. I always like to incorporate gamification. So you know, we're here for seven hours together, right? But I want to share that we've got an hour of breaks and an hour of games. So the heavy lifting is really going to be, you know, five hours or left or less. I want to acknowledge and thank all of you for having your cameras on. One of the things that's tough with these long, and I've done everything right and everything wrong in terms of zooms. I've been using Zoom for many, many years, way before COVID, because we have clients in all four time zones. The point is that it's difficult to stay engaged when, you know, you're not in a room and you, you can't interact. You know, physical react, see people's nonverbal cues, right? Seventy percent of all communications is nonverbal. So I thank you and appreciate that everybody has their cameras on. In a moment, I'm going to go over after the agenda, some kind of roles and responsibilities. Let's just thinking, think of them as kind of ground rules so that they're all working well together. To be clear, I am in service to you. I'm in service to all, everyone of our elected officials and our staff directors. So, but I am also charged with keeping us on time and topic and I will, I will do my best to be a good steward of your time and talent. So we'll, we'll have a little game. It's called two truths and a lie and I'll unpack that when we get there. And after our morning break, we're going to get right into it with a visioning process and we'll explain that. We've got a, we've got a lunch break. And by the way, you know, we've got two breaks and a lunch and if we're pacing on time, we'll do our full complement of 15 minutes for the breaks and 30 minutes for the lunch. If we're a little bit behind, you know, it, it, you know, probably makes sense to shorten those up a little bit. So that's kind of hopefully an inspiration for all of us to keep the ball moving forward. And so that visioning process, which will set the stage for the afternoon. Everything we're doing, by the way, with the exception of the games, which achieves Tracy's vision of us getting to know each other better. I think we have what, four new council members? Is that correct, mayor?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. So that's great. That's a positive. And by the way, I've already tabulated and put together your SWOT analysis report. I'll be emailing that to every one of you during lunch because we're going to use that. You're going to reference that when we get into establishing our short set of priority goals. So you will have that as a resource. The point in bringing that up now is that there were so many positives that came out of that. One of the big positives was that everyone, staff and electeds alike are really excited about the new mayor and the new council coming in. And there's just a lot of real positive energy around that. Probably the biggest dominant theme, the ones, the one with the greatest votes was how amazing skilled and talented your staff is. And so there's just so many things going right. And of course you're going to build on that momentum and make it even better. I know that for sure. So after lunch, we'll, we'll play another game. It's kind of a trivia game and I really want to thank Tracy and Tony for putting in some elbow grease, putting that together. For those of you that aren't aware, Tony and Tracy and myself to some extent, but mostly Tony and Tracy and the team, the staff team have put a lot of work into this to assure that this is really a productive session. So I just want you to know there's been a lot of prep going into this to, to make sure that we're, we're making great use of everybody's time. So after the game, we will review the SWOT. I mean, you'll have it in your inboxes at lunchtime. I've already set it up. The list served, the email is ready for me to hit the, the send button. But after that, after we review the SWOT and so everybody's clear about those results, we'll get right into the main event. Everything that we did before that, the visioning and the SWOT analysis sets the foundation and paves the path for setting our strategic goals, our, excuse me, our priority goals for 22 and 23. And we'll go through that. We'll take a short break in the middle of that session because that'll be our longest session. We'll come back and then we'll wrap up at 3:30 with an effort to adjourn no later than four. So that is our agenda. I know you've all seen it before. I always like to have a North Star. Now you're going to set a North Star when we do our visioning. But the North Star for the actual retreat, these are the outcome objectives and this is what facilitators use to make sure that we are, you know, keeping the conversation on topic and at the appropriate strategic level. So our effort today is to establish a 2023 vision, a vision that we would realize by 1231, 2023 that drives the development of a short set of 2022 and 2023 priority goals. One of the things that came out from the SWOT analysis is kind of a dominant theme was that we are trying to do way too many things at the same time and that kind of may, and there's also shifting priorities. So what makes it difficult to really stay, you know, centered and the purpose of strategic plan, planning really is to, you know, establish our North Star and all of that. Another key finding, which exasperates the fact that we're trying to do too much is that we're understaffed. Our staff, they're overworked, they're overwhelmed. And you know, that leads to retention problems. And when you have a staff as just awesome as you do, the last thing you want to do is create an ecology that causes them pain, right? They're brilliant. We want to hold on to them, et cetera. So again, everything we're doing is in sequential order and the SWOT analysis is just so informative and you'll be really pleased at just all of the positives. But you know, you know, we were candid, everybody was candid about some of the challenges that we're experiencing in terms of weaknesses and threats. Again.
If I could interrupt us for a second, I see Councilmember Rodenberg, you had your hand up a moment ago. Did you have a comment?
It was an accident.
Oh, okay. Just want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to say what they need to say whenever that happens.
Thank you, Tony. And by the way, when I'm actually presenting, I just have one thumbnail and whoever is speaking shows up on my thumbnail. By the way, it was great to see you, Lee. I love putting faces to names. I've had the pleasure of interviewing most of the electeds and it was a real treat getting to know you all. But the point of that, and I really appreciate Tony chiming in and, and please keep doing that, Tony. But I can't see if your hands are up. So I'm going to ask you, and by the way, this is, this is designed to be an exchange. You know, I'm kind of setting some stage here, but we're going to get to the point where, you know, Andrew comes up for air and it's, it's hearing from our elected officials and directors that that's most important. But these preliminaries really set a stage for an effective process and collaborative environment. So thank you, Tony. If you see a hand, please stop me. I absolutely want to recognize people as thoughts occur to them. So.
Will do, Andrew. Thank you.
Excellent. So anyway, that's, that's our North Star for the retreat. You, during the visioning process, will develop our North Star that will be our guidance system to establish a short set of priority goals. So now on to kind of the roles and responsibilities. And now honestly, I don't want you to feel special. I use this exact same slide for every retreat I've done. I've been facilitating as a professional since 1993. And since then, I facilitated well over 500 retreats and 200 of them have been for government. That's something I really enjoy. Now probably a little bit more of half of them have been internal like departments and, you know, doing projects for a mayor or a county executive, that kind of a thing. But I've done scores and scores of county councils. We have about 16 municipality clients in the Puget Sound and many of them have hired us many, many multiple times. I facilitated the SCA retreat yesterday. It was my 10th consecutive retreat with them. And I love working with Deanna Dawson and she has an awesome board led by Angela this year, the mayor of Redmond.
So Andrew, I'm going to interrupt just for a moment. So the council and everyone knows SCA is the suburb or the Sound Cities Association. It's basically a King County centric group. It is a, all of the cities except Seattle are members of the Sound Cities Association.
Excellent. You know, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot we're in Pierce County and you might not be clued into Sound Cities.
And I was on their board in 2010 and 11.
Yeah. In fact, that's when you and I first met and we didn't even know we were meeting because when you were there, we were in Mayor Law's office, Dennis Law's office, it was being held at Renton's City Hall. You were there. I was, that was the first one I was facilitating because that was Deanna's first year as executive director. So I really appreciate you having my back, Tony, and, and making sure that, you know, acronyms are horrible and I always tell people, don't use them. And what do I do? I use them. Anyway, so, but I use this for everything and it's really not about a concern I have, but it's just about making sure that we're all swimming in the same direction. So roles and responsibilities for all of you participants. Right? We have eight electeds and we have 11 directors, including Tony. And so I'm asking you on, I know you've all seen this, but for me to be effective at, you know, honoring your time and talent, I'm asking you to agree on the agenda that was circulated. So I can use that as a tool to make sure that it's a productive session and that you look back on this day at the end of the day or next week and go, that was time well spent. And we have a guidance system in place to keep us from overwhelming our resources and staying focused on what matters most. So in terms of participants, I just have a couple, a couple guiding principles. One is that I'm going to ask folks to participate, but the note, but that no one or a few people dominate. And the thing that I teach my students, I'm faculty at the UW School of Business in my 10th year teaching there is active listening skills are so powerful. And the best communications practice that I've ever learned personally is that if we seek first to understand before trying to be understood, things are going to go really well. There'll be a really good communications loop and et cetera. And then of course, I'm, I request that you remain engaged and not on your phone. You know, it'd be embarrassing if I called on you and you weren't actually with us. And the last thing I want to do is embarrass anybody, but participate, but please don't dominate. Everyone, this doesn't happen very often, but if somebody is kind of on a roll and, you know, kind of sharing an essay response that that's kind of dragging on, I'm just going to go, hey, thank you so much for your contribution. Very, very important. And I'm going to move on. So somebody else, another participant can share, you know, their thoughts and views. And so just take my gentle, my, my gentle reminders there is just, you know, to, to really make sure that we have a level and equitable playing field. So next, really like to talk briefly about the differences between disagreeing and being disagreeable. So I actually promote disagreement. I don't like the word. What I like is civil discourse, right? If all of you, and I'm really focused on the electives because you set the strategic direction, you set policy, right? But my favorite quote is from John F. Kennedy and he said, and it was about the political process. If you have 10 people on a committee and they all see the issue the exact same way, you have nine too many people on that committee. It's the diversity of perspective, thoughts and values that come together in a civil discourse that produce a better product and a better outcome. What I, I will not allow to happen, I'm not the boss here. I work for you, but I am going to hold to some ground rules is people having a disagreeable or an unsable tone. Now that happens so rarely. But frankly, and this council, I'm so excited about, and you're excited about each other. There's so much positive energy. I've talked to all of you and you just, you're, you're ready for this. Every once in a while, now I know this may surprise you, but every once in a while I will work with a council that's quite dysfunctional. And when I use an example of a council that just is firing on all cylinders, I remember working with John Marashoni when he was when he was the mayor of Redmond and that group put together, you know, one Redmond, that council, they were amazing. They were just firing on all cylinders. And I've had a few that, that are really at each other's throats. And just, we're not going to deal with that, but I'll share examples and names of great councils, experiences and never share a city or a county council that was dysfunctional, but we've all seen it. Some of us maybe have even experienced it. Okay. So that's your end of it. My end, as we kind of wrap up here as the facilitator is that I'm asking you to give me authority. Did you have a question, Tony? You just showed up on my screen.
I'm going to guess. No, I did not. I was about to make a comment, but then you made it for me.
Oh, okay. So I'm going to ask you to, to give me authority based on this agenda, again, to be a good steward of your time and talent to keep us on focus, to keep us focused and on track based on the topics and the time of on our agenda. And by the way, the times are approximate. I'm not going to kibosh a rich discussion if we're in the middle of something, but I'm going to use them to kind of keep us going. Also, we want to keep the conversation at the appropriate strategic strata. We're dealing with high level vision and, and priority goals. We're not going to get down into the weeds, right? And we're certainly not going to encroach on our, our staff's responsibility, right? That's Tony's job. Tony manages the staff and et cetera. So parking lot, every once in a while, somebody will share something that's off topic. And to honor that request, I will put it into the parking lot. I've already got a parking lot set up. And then we'll move right back to the agenda. And then finally, it's a somewhat ambitious agenda. And so if we get high centered or stuck, we may need to move to committee or to staff to finalize a product. So just, those are kind of what we're doing here. Just really briefly, only have five minutes left. So I'm going to speed up my pace just a bit before actually, we have lots of margin built in to our game. So I'm not going to worry. But I want to talk about building consensus. And I'm sorry, this is kind of 101 and most of you, if not all of you, really understand that consensus is absolutely just general agreement. And any, anybody that tries to effort 100% agreement, that's a fool's errand. You're wasting time and you really will never produce a good product, right? It, consensus is when the majority of the group, you know, especially in a political group, I work with a lot of corporate boards and nonprofit boards as well. And again, they're the, they drive strategic direction and policy. Regardless of whether it's a council, nonprofit or a corporate board, they're the highest planning authority. But it's where the majority, you know, likes the issue under discussion or the decision we're making or that they can live with it. Thumbs up, thumbs sideways, right? And I, when we get high center to use thumbs up, I like it, thumbs sideways. I can live with it, thumbs down. Not so happy with it. So as long as the thumbs up and thumbs sideways are the majority, then we've made a decision and we move on, right? Roberts rules. It's a democratic process. If the thumbs down are equal to or greater than the thumbs up and thumbs sideways, we need to continue the discussion before we move to decision, right? I use the nominal group technique. It's a great tool. It's been around for a very long time. But essentially it's about, you know, identifying a problem or opportunity, get into solutions generation and then get into decision making. It is a fair and equitable process to move from discussion to decision. And you are going to be making decisions today, quite a few actually. But the point is that everybody's opinion is heard and there's equity there. And council votes to prioritize when we're making decisions and the majority rules. This is no different than, you know, what happens in council chambers. Pretty basic. So vocabulary. I just want to make sure that we're all using the same terms and definitions. Otherwise it'll be more difficult for us to interact and to collaborate and work together. So I'm sharing you the best practice vocabulary. So we're going to be dealing with vision, visioning and priority goal setting. So vision essentially, and by the way, I not only teach this, I actually published a book that's doing pretty still 11 years later, still getting monthly checks. I'm not, not complaining by no means a best seller. That wasn't the intent, but I published a book in 2010 on all of this information. And so this is something I have been eating, breathing, sleeping, et cetera, for 38 years. I just, I have passion about this as well as passion about serving you. But it essentially, we're articulating our desired future. It's our image of our desired future. Maybe the legacy we want to leave. A vision is our North Star and it should be aspirational. I'll talk more about that when we get into get into our visioning. I was the CEO of the Western Washington chapter for the March of Dimes. You know, almost 30 years ago, goes way back. And our vision was every baby will be born with its birthright of a healthy start. That's very aspirational. You know, when, when you consider, you know, just how much can go wrong. But we are stating our vision into being, we're not saying, we're going to effort this. We're saying it is this. You can do either for visioning. I'll talk more about that. But the idea of a vision is that it sets the stage and it's the guidance system for establishing goals. Goals fit right underneath and are aligned to vision. It's an accomplishment towards which a long range endeavor. These aren't little projects or initiatives. These are big, big goals. That some of you may have heard of a BHAG, a BHAG, it came out in one of Jim Collins books and it stands for big hairy audacious goal. But anyway, a goal defines what you will do to achieve your vision. That they are not mutually exclusive. They're linked together. And so here is a goal that we established. Actually, I have updated the goal that aligns to realizing that vision to reduce the infant mortality rate from 5.6 of per 5.6 birth defects, birth defects per 1,000 births down to five by 2030. Now you might think that's not big, a big of a leap, but it's a huge leap. It's 11% improvement. By the way, when I became the exec at the March of Dimes in 1993, the birth defect rate was 10.3. So obviously tremendous progress. Strategic planning works. And you can see that this is a smart goal. It's specific. It's measurable, which means it's quantifiable. And it's assigned, it's assigned to the community service department. Back then, of course, the, the targets were different 30 years ago. So just to close up, I love So just to close up, I love to teach in all three different learning styles, audio, visual and kinesthetic. So here's visually what we're gonna do. And this is essentially a strategic planning model. So vision, that's what articulates where you want to be tomorrow. You've identified tomorrow as December 31st, 2023. SWAT, that's what, you know, communicates where we are today. Vision we're doing later this morning, SWAT you've already done. There's only one purpose of strategic planning. And that is to bridge the gap between where you are and where you want to be. And the way we do that is that the vision informs the goals that you will establish. That short set of goals that you will establish that will drive the how. And the how of bridging that gap will be the department plans that will be presented to council. I'll talk more about that in our wrap up. And those department plans will be aligned to and in support of the goals. So that's, that's the model and, and it's just very, very effective. 500 times I've used it, it hasn't failed any of my clients yet. So I am going to end our preliminaries. I do a prologue at the beginning of a retreat. Only the full day sessions and an epilogue at the end. I always choose the prologue at the beginning based on my experience in interviewing all of the electeds. And I choose the epilogue at lunch after I've had a chance to experience you. And so here, by the way, this is all from Mr. Dr. Rogers' book, Mr. Rogers. That's right, Mr. Cardigan Sweater, he wrote a book called Life's Journey According to Mr. Rogers. He was a brilliant human being and I try to live by his values. So here it is. And this is all, you know, things that, that he experienced or wrote about. A friend of mine was in a taxi in Washington DC going slowly past the National Archives. When he noticed the words on the cornerstone of the building, the past is prologue. He read them out loud to the taxi driver and said, what do you think that means, the past is prologue? And the taxi driver says, oh, I'm not sure, but I think it means, man, you ain't seen nothing yet. And so if you're not familiar with that quote, the past is prologue. It, it comes from a Shakespeare play and the idea is the past is the introduction. And it's the beginning of the story to where we're going. And where we're going is very, very special. So that's it. Alrighty, so right here, look at this. Andrew is four minutes late, but he added 10 minutes of margin into this game. So for the next half hour to 40 minutes or so, so we are going to play a game. And all of council, excuse me, all of our elected officials and all of our staff directors are gonna participate. And what I'm gonna do is I'm actually gonna call on you rather than let people to come in organically because it saves quite a bit of time. So two truths and a lie. Now, I'm gonna start off by calling on Tracy and then Tony because they know the game and that'll give some of you some time to think about your true truths and a lie. And so I'm gonna, some of the analytical folks get a little bit of angst about, geez, how do I come up with a lie? So here is your primer. The lie is really easy. All you do is make a minor modification on the truth. So I'm gonna give you an example. And of course, Tony and Tracy, you can't play. In fact, I am gonna stop sharing the screen so I can see you and we can all see each other. So I'm gonna give you two truths and a lie about me in no particular order. And somebody just tried to shout out, one person tries to guess the lie. So I played with the Seattle Seahawks for five seasons. I was intern, as a musician, I was an international recording artist and I have a 20-year-old granddaughter. So would anybody like to jump out there and share who they believe my lie is? It doesn't matter whether you're right or wrong, that's not the point. The point is to get to know each other in a silly fashion. So what's my lie?
20-year-old granddaughter.
Oh my gosh, Robin. One of our council members, I had such a pleasure working with you on the phone and she hit it out of the park. I, I think that she got that that was a minor modification of the truth. My granddaughter actually turned 21 about six months ago. Yes, I'm, I'm an old fart, but whatever. Horrible language. Sorry. Anyway, so yes, I'm not gonna do the detail here. By the way, I am all of 5'8" and soaking wet, I weigh 150 pounds. So I never was in the, when I worked with the Seahawks, it was 88 through 93 before I took over the March of Dimes. And I was in charge of the national marketing and merchandising of the team. I said I played with them, I didn't say I was a Seahawk. Every year, I would fly all of our advertisers in to Seattle with their children. And the kids and their parents got to scrimmage with the Seattle Seahawks every year in the Kingdom. No pads, nothing, but I will tell you, I did tear a groin trying to cover Brian Blades. So if you know Brian Blades, you know Seahawks from, you know, oh my gosh, over 30 years ago. So there it is, that's the simple explanation. So we're gonna run right into, and I actually was a musician and on record contract in Europe, lived, lived there for a few years, it was a lot of fun. So Tracy, we're gonna start with you. Will you please share your two truths and a lie in no certain order? And then, just like Robin did for me, one person just gets to jump out and try to guess the lie. Again, we don't care if you're right or wrong, it's about getting to know each other. You've gotten to know me, you know, I'm full of beans already, right? Okay, Tracy, you are up.
Okay, I had to really scale these back, you know, because this is a publicly recorded meeting. So here's my, here's my two truths and a lie. Okay, number one, I've never been in a hurricane. Number two, I got a palace guard to smile for a photo in front of Buckingham Palace. Number three, I've been stung by a scorpion.
Wow, very cool and creative, but only one of them is creative.
Only one of them is a lie.
Who's gonna guess the mayor's lie?
Palace one, because the palace guards never smile. So do I, do I respond?
Yeah, after somebody guesses, you reveal the lie.
Okay, that is a truth. Wow, yes, that is a truth.
Which is why it's so impressive.
Yes, I was 18 years old on a choir trip to London and we actually got the bobbies to smile for our picture. So there you go. The lie is that I've never been in a hurricane, I've actually been in five.
Oh, see, great, minor modification of the truth. So I want to thank two council members, I want to thank Robin and Mary for getting out there and playing the game. So you both get to pull a star out of petty cash, you're just going great. Okay, the next person up will be Tony.
All right, well, here are my three. First, I attended a gold medal soccer match at the Olympics. I am a published author and my father, my sister and I each have had a hole-in-one playing golf.
Okay, so let's spread the love and different people get to try to guess. Who's gonna guess Tony's lie? It looks like Councilmember Hernan, is it Hernan?
No, Henderson.
Henderson, I'm sorry, I can't read. Go ahead, sir, I saw your hand go up.
I'm thinking the last one, Tony, the hole-in-ones, that's a, three of you in the same family, that would be, that would be amazing.
Well, that is actually true.
Oh, congratulations.
Must have had a hole-in-one. I am also a published author. The thesis I wrote to get my master's was actually published by the University of Texas. So if you go onto Amazon Books and Google my, or type in my name, Anthony A. Piassecki, you'll see my book pop up. But I did not attend a gold medal soccer match at the Olympics. We only got to the quarterfinals for, yeah, round of 16 for that. But I did see the World Cup final for the, when the women won in 2015 up in Vancouver.
Can we get signed copies of your book?
I think it's out of print.
Hey Roger, thank you for playing the game.
And, and the book is called Estimating Demand for Emergency Medical Services. So if you're having trouble sleeping, that's the book to read.
Okay, the next person up is gonna be Brenda.
Oh goodness, okay. So I jotted a couple things down. So I was a cheerleader. I was rescued in an earthquake, a building coming down in Pakistan as a child and saved, my sister saved my life. And I was a backup singer in a band and tambourine and piano player throughout high school and college.
Okay, somebody new, Tony, go ahead.
I'm gonna say that you weren't a cheerleader.
I was not a cheerleader.
Evidently, people know you pretty well, Brenda. They're just figuring that's not part of your DNA.
No.
So they got your lie. Please remind us of your two truths again.
Sure, so I was a backup singer in a band and played piano and tambourine. And, and we're pretty awesome and that band is actually still going. My friend Mark Klebek, who owns Top Pot Donut, still is part of that band. And my sister did rescue me when I was young and an earthquake in the building came down from the rubble and she, to this day, still reminds me that she.
Of course she does.
If I were her, I would too.
Oh, that's hilarious. That is, that is so cool. Alrighty, well, thank you. Okay, the next person we're gonna go for is our finance director, Dave. You are up, sir.
Hello, everybody. Okay, first off, I was raised in Dalton, Pennsylvania. I participated in the state finals for the 880, which is now the 800 meter, such shows, just shows you how old I am. And I was, I was the auditor who wrote like 13 findings on the city back in the early 90s. And that was kind of my introduction to Gigg Harbor.
Well, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but we're gonna ask someone to jump in and, and somebody, and I love how we're kind of spreading the love here. Somebody else chime in and, and take a whack at what you think Dave's lie is.
That he grew up in Pennsylvania?
Nope, I was actually born in Pennsylvania, grew up in North Carolina and Pennsylvania, and it was Dalton. The lie was the, the, the state finals. I was actually in the state finals, but it was for the two-mile relay, which is four legs of the half mile.
See how brilliant you guys are, you just pick up on this, that minor modification of the truth just makes it so easy. I started first doing this, you know, probably this exercise, I don't know, probably over 25 years ago. And the first couple of times I did it, because we all have different personality and communication styles, which is actually an asset, right? Back to the JFK quote, differences make us better, right? Celebrating those differences, but I, I took notice. Of course, I'm, everything is live then, that some people were kind of squirming in their seats. And later I realized that they were, you know, more of the analytical and, and pragmatic type folks. And they had a hard time coming up with a lie. So I'm glad you're all embracing this notion of a minor modification. So great, thank you so much, Dave. Jenny, elected Jenny, you are up.
Hi, thank you. Good morning, everybody. So my true truths and a lie. Number one, I worked for the LA Times. Number two, I was on a dressage horseback championship team in Virginia. And number three, I was the assistant lighting designer for the American Ballet in Carnegie Hall.
Wow.
Go for it.
That's huge. Okay, now I don't get to play the game. I, I think I actually am a pretty good poker player and I can actually see people's tells. And so I think I know her lie, but I don't get to play. So who's gonna jump in? They're all very impressive. Dave is just laughing his tail off.
I'm baffled.
You're baffled, well, good. I want to play poker with you, I'll make some money on you. So who's gonna jump in and guess Jenny's lie? Go ahead, Brenda.
Was it the dressage?
I was not a championship team. Yep, totally.
Wow.
But you did dressage?
I did.
Awesome, that's great.
Lighting designer, I thought that was a lie.
And the fact that she was the lighting designer at Carnegie Hall, it doesn't get any bigger than that, you know. So what is it, Brenda and I were musicians, right? Piano and tambourine, Brenda. And so there's an old joke of musicians, it's like, how do you get to Carnegie Hall? Practice, man, practice. Joke, I'm sorry.
Then I'll light you, so it'd be okay.
Next up is Jeff from Public Works.
All right, let's see, in no particular order. In high school, through, through high school and college, I split my summers between working at Spadoni Brothers, doing paving and heavy equipment maintenance and being on sailboats up in San Juans and Gulf Islands. I took my first commercial airline flight at the age of 24 and I've always been a big traveler.
Cool.
I'm gonna say the airplane at 24.
No, that's a true.
That's my guess.
That was my guess too.
I was on many small private planes when I was younger, but never, never on a commercial airplane until I was working for Cadman Concrete and they sent me on a business trip.
Well, good for you for jumping in, Katrina, and that's, that's amazing. And, and he did say commercial air flight. So he made a really good distinction there. Awesome. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, now we are going to go with Lee.
Good morning, everyone. My two truths and one lie in no particular order.
Lee, you're on mute, Lee.
There we go. No particular order. The Corvette in my garage was a gift from the company that convinced General Motors to build the Corvette out of fiberglass. I was in a car accident where my car was pushed on railroad tracks and I was hit by a train. And I'm a published author of two different but similar engineering manuals.
Wow. Well, I'm glad you're still vertical. If the train thing was real, who's gonna guess?
I'm gonna say the engineering manuals, but I hope the Corvette thing's true, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, there, it is true, the Corvette is true, but I'm only the published author of one engineering manual.
Wow.
Very cool. Hey Fred, thank you very much, Lee. Fred, you have an amazing voice. You, you know, and with your face, you should be on TV. I always joke that I've got a face for radio. So anyway, boy, do you, by chance, do you sing?
Oh, I'm a terrible singer, I can't carry it too.
Well, your, your voice is just remarkable. Okay, great, thank you so much, appreciate that, Lee. Now we're gonna go to Josh.
All right, so here's my three. Before I got into city government, I planned to pursue a career in acting. My second one is I am a fully certified and rated incident communications center manager with my red card with the emergency response system. And my third one is my master's degree is in education and I briefly pursued a career as a high school math teacher.
Fascinating. Okay, who hasn't jumped in? I mean, Katrina and Fred just did and we, I know Brenda's been there. Okay, go for it.
I'm going for the math thing, I think the math thing is not true.
That's correct. I was actually a high school history teacher.
Well, that's brilliant, Jenny. You're scary, I'm not gonna play poker with you. You, you definitely get people's tells. Excellent. Okay, so now I'm gonna go to Robin. Robin, you are up.
Alrighty, I have visited all 50 states. I've worked as a professional kayaker and I've attended an inaugural ball.
I'm assuming you're talking about the president's inauguration.
I don't think I qualified that.
Oh, now, see, your facilitator just made his first big mistake. I apologize, Robin. Oh, I am so bad. Okay, forget about what I said. Go ahead there, Matthew.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure starting to get to know Robin and I'm gonna doubt that she's been to 50 states. I think she's up there, but maybe not 50.
You are right, and I think I'm driving Matthew crazy, so I apologize for that as we've gotten to know each other. I've visited 48 states.
Wow.
But I was a professional kayaker in Pennsylvania, Dave, on the Lehigh. And I went to the inaugural ball in Iowa. Thanks so much, Andrew.
I know, I seriously blew it. That's, that's horrible.
And Robin, for which Iowa governor was it?
Branstad, when he got elected again for like his 12th term. But I had to sit out in the lobby because I was not from the right party.
Oh, that is hilarious. Well, Robin, thank you for, uh, forgiving me and having some patience. Um, I told you that I've done a lot right and I've done a lot, lot wrong, and I am sure I'll continue making mistakes the rest of my life. I figure if I don't make any mistakes, I'm not trying hard enough. Anyway, Robin, that was awesome. Uh, very cool. Okay. So now we're gonna go to, uh, is it Camille? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I've built ten homes. Sang with the Harlem Gospel Choir or climbed to the top of Mount Rainier.
Wow. Who's up?
I'll say top of Mount Rainier. That's right. I climbed to Camp Meere with cops on top in two thousand and two, um, right after nine eleven and carried their water, which is a lot more heavier when you're going up a mountain, just saying.
Hey, I'm curious, Camille, um, Camp Meere, is that like, uh, at around eleven, twelve thousand feet? That's way up there, isn't it?
Pretty high, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know people, I have, I've never done it, but I have a lot of friends that have done that. I know people that actually have gotten altitude sickness as low as Camp Meere. So that's, that's uh some, those are some good chops. So thank you all. Appreciate you guys playing. And what do we have next? Um, next we have Roger.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, my two truths and a lie, of course, in no order. Um, I drove the assistant secretary of the army around Reno, Nevada. My oldest son was born in Bavaria, Germany. And I spent time in a local city police detention cell. Now Lieutenant Douglas, no fair looking at my rap sheet, okay?
I knew I recognized.
Oh, that's great. Okay, who is gonna guess, um, who's gonna guess Roger's lie?
I'm going with this son being born in Bavaria.
My second oldest son was born in Bavaria.
You know, I'm starting to get a little bit freaked out. I've done this, uh, this game hundreds of times and never have I had so many people accurately guess. Um, where in Bavaria? I, I lived just south of Munich when I was uh on tour. Excuse me, just south of Frankfurt, pardon me.
He lived in, uh, she was born in the Kreiskrankenhaus Eschenbach, which is kind of near Waiden. It's up in the upper part of Bavaria.
Cool. Bavaria is my favorite state of the seven in uh, in uh, Germany. I just love Bavaria. Thanks for sharing, Roger. Okay.
Uh, Lieutenant Douglas doesn't dig into this. Uh, my time in the city police detention cell was part of the um Gig Harbor Citizens Police Academy. We all got to walk into this.
So his rap sheet, his rap sheet's very short. Um, maybe he doesn't even have one bullet on it. Okay, next, we're gonna go with uh Katrina. You are up.
I wish I could turn my camera off while I'm saying these things. My face gives me away. Okay. Um, I spent New Year's Eve in two thousand and fourth Eiffel Tower. I lived in North Carolina after college for two years. And I met Oprah while waiting in line at Disney World.
I'm gonna say the Eiffel Tower.
Nope, I was there. New Year's Eve, two thousand and four.
Wow, what is your lie, Katrina?
My lie is that I only lived in North Carolina for one year after college and then moved back because I missed Washington.
Cool. Well, we're glad to have you back home. Very cool.
Awesome.
And, and one of your, what was the other truth?
I met Oprah at Disney World. The rock and roller coaster.
That's what I was gonna ask is which, uh, which ride?
Yep.
That tells me how courageous she is. I think we all know Oprah has been very courageous. Uh, thank you, uh, Katrina. Next up is.
Where did you live in North Carolina?
I lived in New Bern.
New Bern, I used.
Near the coast.
High Point, North Carolina.
That's just south of Munich, for those of you that aren't clear. Okay, Keith, you are up.
Okay. Uh, my three would be, um, I used to drive trucks. I played football in high school on both sides of the ball, defense and offense. And I play in a band.
I don't think you drove a truck.
That would be incorrect. I did go and get my CDL and I did drive trucks for like two years.
Hey, truck drivers now with, there's like an eighty thousand driver shortage. They are making bank, signing bonuses. They're starting off at seventy K benefits.
Don't tell him that.
Oh, no. Oh, we're not gonna lose, Keith. He's not gonna go anywhere. That's, so yeah, what's the lie?
The lie would be that I play in a band.
True for a minute.
I was hoping that.
I thought you were gonna say that you only played offense or defense in football, not both ways.
You know, really good players do get tapped to play both, especially.
Did that for a half in one game.
Especially if you are, a, a lot of the times, you will see a wide receiver also serve as a cornerback. And you'll see, um, you'll see, you know, maybe an outside smaller linebacker serve as a safety. Tell us the two positions you played, Keith.
Well, on defense, I played corner and a little safety on offense. Uh, little quarterback, mostly wide receiver, um, mostly because of my speed.
There you go. There you go. Awesome. Well, very cool. Very cool. Thanks, Keith. Awesome. My thing just got turned off again. Okay, uh, we're gonna go with our, our police chief Kelly.
We have Fred standing in.
I'm, I'm the acting chief. We don't have Kelly today, so.
Gotcha.
He's, he's around down in Arizona.
Um, with a voice like that, if he told me to put my hands up, I would obey instantly. I, I'm sorry, go ahead there, uh, Fred, you're up.
Okay, uh, I grew up in Arkansas and attended the University of Arkansas. I was in the US Army for twelve years and I was an alternate for the Senior US Open Golf Tournament.
Holy moly.
I see number three. The golf.
Well, that was true. That was three year, three years ago, I was uh second alternate for the uh, for Washington. So I didn't get to go because the two guys went, but I tried.
What's your handicap, Fred?
Uh, right now it's two point seven index.
You and I will never golf together. Mine is, mine's twenty-eight. I would hold you up. Okay, please share your lie, Fred.
Uh, I grew up in Arkansas, but I went to Westminster College in Missouri, not University of Arkansas, like everyone else in my family.
I bet that one was popular. Cool. Well, Fred, it's, it's great to get to know you. Um, now we're gonna go with Laura. Our tourism director.
You're on mute, Laura.
On it. There we go. Thank you. Um, let's see, um, I, one of my career greats is securing the last uh Oprah giveaway when she said you're all going to Australia. Um, I've lived in New York, LA, Texas, Denver, and Atlanta. Uh, I have also gone to junior high with someone on this Zoom.
I'm sorry, say the last one again, Laura.
I went to junior high with someone on this Zoom call.
Oh. Okay, well, that person's gonna know whether that's the truth or not, so I think she just narrowed her list down from three to two. And, and maybe not. I'm gonna shut up. I'll get myself in trouble again. So who's gonna guess Laura's lie? Uh, Tony's going for it.
I'm gonna go with the, all the cities that you said you've lived in. I don't think you've, uh, I think one of them isn't true.
I have not lived in Atlanta. I've lived everywhere else. And my roommate that I met in New York, we figured out that we were both from Washington. And we figured out we were both from Gig Harbor. We figured out we'd graduated the same year, her from Peninsula and me from Gig Harbor. So Gig Harbor travels everywhere.
Wow. Has anybody uh in our group here in, of, of the entire group, has anybody actually driven on a freeway in Atlanta?
No.
No.
Uh, Matthew has a couple. Mary, several of you, yeah, several of you, um, scared the heck out of me. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Laura, who'd you go to middle school with?
Yeah.
Camille and I went to junior high together.
Camille kept her poker face. Good for you, Camille. Okay, uh, we're gonna move over to Seth. What state are you in, Seth, right now?
I am home. I am in Gig Harbor. Um, but yeah, I'll be moving, traveling a lot these days. Uh, so.
Yeah, you spanned like five or six different time zones in the last few weeks.
Yeah, I know, and it, it's gonna continue here for a couple more weeks, but yeah, so I'll surprise you next with where I am. So anyways, so my uh two truths and a lie, um, which is nice having a little time, so I'm trying to get a little bit more creative, uh, like many of you have, just twisting the truth a little bit here. Um, so first, I married my sister. Um, I just had to look for all the responses there. Uh, in my early twenties, I was a professional fly fisherman. And once a year, I play with Pearl Jam.
I don't think you play with Pearl Jam.
I hope that one's true.
It is true. Once a year, I play flag football with Pearl Jam. And it's pretty awesome. Um, yeah, we, we play down at the Seahawks Field for a tournament that Mike McLeary um, puts on for Crohn's disease. So I a very cool uncle, uh, who knows those guys well. I got invited to come and play and actually we've won the championship a couple of times, so pretty, pretty sweet. So no, I don't play the guitar or drums and step in for Pearl Jam, but uh, I throw a pigskin with them.
So which one is your lie?
My lie is that I was a professional fly fisherman in my twenties. That would have been awesome. Um, but you don't make much money anyways. You just get a lot of good swag. That's what I was trying to, you know, get into it for. Um, and I married.
Just you better clarify number one for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, isn't that illegal in every state except for West Virginia?
During the, during the campaign, that, this might have been a, a killer for me. So I'm an ordained minister and I married my sister Bree. There you go.
Boy, he wasn't kidding about getting creative. That was really impressive.
Yeah, well, actually, make sure that, keep it to the truth, okay? Don't go around spreading rumors.
That scared the heck out of me. I'll, I'll, I'll be honest. Um, okay, Matthew, you are up.
Well, I'm also intimidated. You guys are awesome. And um, I guess I'm that analytical one. And that's my truth, 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 because I'm just, wow. Um, two truths and a lie. I like public meetings. I lived in North Carolina as well, but I lived there for four years before I came back. And lastly, I like conflict.
Six of you jumped in all at once. I love it.
Nobody can like public meetings. That can't be possible.
No, I remember he said that in his interview and we were like, what?
Yes, he did.
That's the truth.
I think it's the North Carolina one. I think he lived there for three years or two years.
Katrina, thank you for calling me out on it. I was there for six. Great place, but glad to be back.
So you teach us your secret on liking conflict because um, that's amazing.
Well, I'll tell you one way you can do it with style. He has had a smile on his face uh our entire time. Actually, that's one of the things I was gonna close with, but I've already opened it with. I am seeing more smiles on the screen than probably any retreat I've done in a couple of years. And I gotta tell you, that is just so, it's just so heartwarming and the energy is so positive with this group. Um, oh, it's just, it's such, it's such an honor and a treat to be with you all. Mary, you are up. I didn't forget about you.
Oh, I figured you had, Andrew. No.
No, no.
And I'll just say, as the, the newest kid on the block, this game is really fun because we're learning about each other in something that is different than Matthew Keigho, comma, Parks manager. We're learning what's important about each other. So um, I, I just have really enjoyed this. So my two truths and a lie are I've developed recipes for Rocky Mountain oysters. I've flown in an Air Force Rescue helic- helicopter and I've been arrested at a protest rally.
I'm gonna call it out as arrested at a protest rally. And I, cause I hope to hear the story, so.
That is correct because I wasn't arrested, but.
At the rally. So um, we're not gonna let you go just with that, Mary. Hold on. Show of hands, I'm guessing a lot of you, I'm, I actually used to work on a farm when I was growing up. How many of you know what Rocky Mountain oysters are? Oh, I, just about everybody. I have eaten Rocky Mountain oysters. Took a lot of barbecue sauce, but I did it when I was in Colorado.
Well, I said I developed the recipes too. I didn't say I ate them.
How many people have eaten them? Raise your hand.
What's that?
I have actually eaten them once.
How many people have eaten them?
When you have Keith and Andrew, ugh.
A lot fewer people have eaten them than have tried them.
I've got a great joke about them at some other time.
Is that your lie, Mary? Was that your lie?
No, my lie was the protest rally.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
She was at the rally, but she didn't get arrested.
But you didn't get arrested.
Actually, no one got arrested at this rally. It was a giant rally, but no one got arrested.
That's actually very impressive. Um, you know, that sounds like, that sounds very MLK-esque.
It sounds like you weren't protesting hard enough.
Well, there was, it was actually, it was in Walla Walla. We took over the campus and the entire campus and most of the town came and joined this occupation of the streets and the, and the administration building for about four hours. Professors were failing anybody who showed up at class.
Oh.
Yeah. And it was, what had happened is the school, I went to Whitman College and they had dropped the football team. The problem wasn't that they dropped the football team, the board of trustees dropped it. Problem wasn't that they dropped it necessarily, but it was that they didn't even bother to tell the team or the coach before it hit the newspaper.
And I can tell you, um, that any professor that would fail somebody uh for something that wasn't performance related would be put up on discipline charges. You can't do that.
Well, this was the seventies, so you.
Oh, there you go. Well, you know what? I don't know if this is true, but back in the seventies, when you were there, Whitman was known of having a really good veterinary school, veterinarian school.
We didn't have a vet, vet school.
Okay, I must be thinking of something else. Um, it was probably, I, I guessed that after I ate a Rocky Mountain oyster, something.
Yeah.
Something, but something got to me.
Oysters came later too.
So last and absolutely not least is our court administrator, Stacy. Bring us home, Stacy.
Okay, so I have been in five bus ass, bus accidents. I can play the guitar and I'm Native American.
I'm gonna go with the bus accidents because I don't think you've been in five.
No, that's actually true.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah.
You can't play the guitar then.
Uh, that's correct. I do not play the guitar.
So what made you come up with that lie?
Pardon?
What made you come up with that lie? Pardon me?
Um, I actually play the saxophone. Um, I went to college on a music scholarship for the saxophone. I was uh invited by the Seattle Symphony to audition for their group. And I played in the Tacoma Concert Band and a lot of things like that, um, in my time. And I'm also Native American.
Well, you, um, you've got some good chops with uh that, that resume. That's pretty cool. You know what? There's enough of us on this call, we could actually start a band.
That's what I was thinking. It's the, you know, the Gig Harbor or something.
Okay, great. Now I wanna make sure, and I have this list. Tony's been preparing me. I've got this list here. Did I miss anybody? Okay, great.
I don't think so. I think we got it.
Yeah.
Good list. Hey, thank you all for playing. Um, and thank you, uh, Mayor Tracy. Thank you for setting us off on this fun game. The first thing she said to me was that I wanna have fun and I want to, I want everybody to get to know each other better. And so here we are. So Tracy, thank you for putting us on the right path. That was a lot of fun and.
That was fun. Thanks. Thank you, everybody.
And, and we're, we're four minutes early, so we're doing. And we're four minutes early, so we're doing great. That means we're gonna take the entire fifteen minutes. However, before I cut you loose, I want you to look at your watch. I can't tell you what time it is because everybody has a different time. How many of you, show of hands, have been to like a conference out of town or whatever? And then they have a fifteen minute break. And then, you know, nobody comes back until twenty twenty, you know, the break goes forever. Has anybody experienced that?
Yes.
Okay, so I think you all get the idea that I'm anal retentive. I'm definitely anal retentive on time. In fact, I know some of you have seen my TEDx talk. And so for you, this is gonna be redundant, but my wife Sandra was convinced I was potty trained at gunpoint. So pretty serious issue with me. Anyway, the point is that I'm really anal retentive on time. So I want you to all look at your clocks. We're gonna adjourn in ten seconds. I want everybody back in fourteen minutes because we're gonna start on time. Bye, everybody.
Good.
But at the end of the day, it's designed to benefit you all. So I'm gonna give another thirty seconds. Then we're gonna jump in and I will prime our first exercise.
Andrew, since we have thirty seconds, I also worked for the March of Dimes.
Oh, really? Actually, I knew that. You and I talked about that on the phone.
Did we talk about that?
We did, but I'm a lot older than you are. So I was, I was there from eighty-three, excuse me, from ninety-three to ninety-seven. And I was in charge of the Western Washington chapter.
I was at the national office, but like right after you, ninety-eight, ninety-nine?
Uh huh. In White Plains? Yeah, Dr. Jennifer House, is she still there?
I don't know, but she was there when I was there.
Yeah, actually, I checked a few years ago and she was still the CEO. Anyway, yes, I, as, you know, one of the chapter execs, I was in New York. I was actually on the President's Advisory Council. So I was in, I was in New York twice a year for just those meetings. And we met in Washington DC a lot and, and all of that. Mayor, are you back with us? We're right at our, well, we're actually past our fifteen minutes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna chat a little bit here. I feel a little sheepish starting without her, but I want to ask a question. Obviously, I'm using everybody's first name. Are you, I'm talking with my eight elected officials. Are you comfortable with me using your first name?
I am.
I see a bunch of thumbs up. I always ask, when I'm working with municipalities, I've never had anybody say, no, I'm not really comfortable with that. And pardon me, I'm gonna mute for a second. Pardon me. Anyway, so I've had the opportunity with the March of Dimes and I've also been a lot of volunteer boards, past chair of United Way, things like that. So I've been to Washington DC many times. You know, doing volunteer lobbying advocacy, right? And I've gotten to know a lot of our, our state officials. You know, I've broken bread with Maria Cantwell, Rick.
Larson.
Rick Larson, thank you. Anyway, so when I'm with them, it's always first name basis. But if I'm ever in public, a public setting, you know, it's Representative Larson or Senator Cantwell. I don't use the, but in, you know, we're just together in a small group. So I just checking to make sure, just kind of want to honor that. So great. So we're about to move into our first exercise. Had a lot of fun, great way to start. Now we're getting down to some work, but you guys work so well together. It's gonna be awesome. Now, as I'm unpacking these exercises and as I'm facilitating the process, there's two things that I'd like you to know, and I'm gonna share my screen. Because I've set everything that I've been doing up for years and years and years virtually. And because we have so many clients out of town, I've been doing virtual stuff for a while. So two things I want to share. One is I want to acknowledge that there's more, more than one way to do visioning and goal setting. There's just probably dozens of ways. All I'm gonna ask is that you trust me to be using these best practices. And that we'll use the approaches and the methods that I'm suggesting, knowing that they're not the only way. I won't even try to sell you that they're on the best way. But I did research for seven years before writing my book. And I cannot tell you how many different models of strategic planning, visioning, goal setting, strategic development, all the way down to action plans and tactical and, you know, project management GANs and every level. And so I learned a lot. I learned from some of the best. And I, what I did is I took the best. And I got rid of the worst and I developed, you know, a lot of these tools that you're seeing now. None of them, to be honest with you, are novel science. I've got my spin on some of these things, but these really are best practices. So I'll ask you to indulge me in our approaches here because they're very lean. I'm certified lean six sigma. I'm a real lean freak. And so it's really, we're essentially gonna get a day and a half of work done and what accounts to about five hours. The second thing I'd like to share is that I can't spell. So we talked about the March of Dimes, Robin and I, you know, kind of with that. And I'm gonna have to have a sidebar conversation with you, Robin. I want to know what you did at National. I spent so much time there, but I, one of the reasons, I was on the Board of Directors of the March of Dimes for two years. That's how I knew them and they knew me. And when our director retired, they came at me to kind of do a turnaround because they were really struggling. And at this time, I was with the Seattle CBS affiliate and working for the Seahawks at the same time. I had business cards for both. My paycheck came from, from Cairo. But the point is that I really have a heart for people that are differently abled. When I was in third grade, I was labeled mentally retarded. And the kids would say, you know, I call me a retard. You know, we can't use that language anymore. But we didn't test for dyslexia in the mid-sixties. Yes, I'm in my sixties. And of course, what was a horrible experience growing up ended up being just a gift as an adult. I wouldn't change any of that. The point is that I'm very sensitive to people that are differently abled. I have all three forms of dyslexia severe, and it never goes away. So here's the deal. I can't spell. And to add insult to injury, I can't type either. And I'm gonna be doing both for the rest of the day. So I hope you don't feel too abused, but I always start every class at the U and every new client with my ABC box. If it's live in a flip chart, I'm drawing a little box. The ABC box is simply this. As I'm doing all of this and my typing is ugly and I can't spell, you're gonna see words. In fact, I'm gonna, I want to see your faces. You're gonna see words that are missing a letter. And so all I want you to do is quietly and cognitively go into the imaginary, the virtual letterbox, pull a letter out and fix the word. There's gonna be times where I have words with extra letters. Just reverse the process, pull the letter out of the word, stick it back in the box. By four o'clock, it's all gonna even out. I'm just sharing that it's gonna be kind of ugly getting there. So that's my disclaimer. And so please put up with me and we'll just go from there. So that's your virtual ABC box. So actually, you know what? I want to go back and I have to unpack this exercise. So shame on me for, look at this, I'm so anal retentive. I actually have a slide that says break. So I'm gonna do a little bit of priming for vision. Okay, so here are some qualities of well crafted vision statements. And I said, I've done this a lot. I've even done this for three Fortune 500 companies. So I've, I'm, I'm battle tested and I always learn something. And I always try to optimize, but this stuff works. And this exact process, I led the National Securities Division of Microsoft on the on the Redmond campus through this process several years ago. So qualities of a well crafted vision statement. First of all, it's got a longer time horizon. And it can go from, you know, you can do visioning from one to twenty years. Most people don't go more than twenty years out. But we are focused on looking at two years out. So for this purpose, I want you to hyper yourself to in time to the end of, right before you celebrate New Year's Eve, going into twenty twenty-four, think about the end of twenty twenty-three. Excuse me. I'm sorry. So vision statements are different than mission statements in that they're very short and easy to recall. Mission statements typically run between twenty and thirty words. I have a twenty-five word rule. It's first chapter of my book, Finding Your North Star. Vision statements are typically shorter. So vision is about your statement. Mission is about your statement of purpose. Vision is about articulating your preferred future, right? Your desired future. But they're really short. And they'll typically run between, instead of twenty to thirty words, they'll run between ten and twenty. I'm just trying to give you some boundaries here so we don't write books because that will take us in to tomorrow and we'll miss the ASC and NFC championship. Chips. So this is about, this is about communicating your city's desired future. And so we're thinking about the end of twenty twenty-three. So there are three things that are really essential that you think of to be effective at visioning. So one, and this can be a little challenging. And this is especially true for, you know, when you're looking twenty years out, we're only looking at two years out. And so frankly, that's much easier. But you want to kind of abandon your present day sense of reality. If you're steeped in today, then it's difficult to really get out and open up to tomorrow because we are creating your preferred future. I'm gonna ask you to think big, out of the box. And this is the challenging part for some folks, especially those that are project managers or very analytical or tactically oriented. I don't want you to worry about how you'll get there. If your concern is, oh, that's not a good vision, just no way we can do that. If you're actually, if you have that internal narrative, then trust me, you're not visioning. So deep breath, let it go. Don't worry about how. Let go of the constraints of reality. I want you to think about the legacy that you as, and of course, you know, at the end of two years, this great new group, and I know that we're all not new, five of the eight of you are not, not, not new, but, or four, we've got, there's eight of you. Four, four of you are not new. But the point is that we're really, we're really trying to let go of reality. And so this is a great process to go through. And one thing is that with the eight of you, looking two years out, you'll only be halfway through your term. So again, it's a little bit shorter time horizon and easier to do. So I want to give you some examples. I'm gonna show you the good, the bad and the ugly. These all have, well, I'm gonna show you three. Two of them are mostly right, but each one of them does something different wrong. So this one is a great vision statement, but it's way too long. They could dump the year after year. Weston and its people will be regarded as the best and most sought after hotel and resort management group in North America. Boom. They're saying, they're calling out what they wish. Now, I mentioned before, your vision statement can be stated as your aspiration, we will be at this place, we will achieve that. Or it can actually be in the present, like we already are here, we're already the leader, we're already the best. We actually already got here. They're both correct. So I don't want you to worry about that. So this is a great, inspiring aspirational statement, but it's long. Now, I would have just cut the year after year. Next, this one's good, but it wastes three words. No vision statement is gonna be isolated by itself. It's in the context of the city, the brand, and it's gonna have a little title that says vision statement. So why would you want to waste three words by saying our vision is? So anyway, but other than that, this is a really good statement. Our vision is to be the global energy company most admired for its people, partnerships and performance. And by the way, this particular company is headquartered in the Bay Area, and I actually did some work with them. It's really, really cool. In fact, actually, I got mentored by one of the senior execs at this company, and they're international company. But does anybody want to just throw out there and guess who this amazing global energy company that's so admired is?
Union Oil.
Okay, so that's an outstanding guess. And it's pretty much the same as this. It's Chevron. So the point is that many years ago, you know, like the Union Oil, like what Lee said, the Mobile Exons, et cetera, et cetera. They're not talking about petroleum. They're talking about, now, there's a lot of petroleum going on, but you know, we're making a movement towards not only energy independence, but something that's not, you know, emitting carbon. I know carbon emissions into our atmosphere. So it's really about energy. But anyway, so it's a big statement and I love, it's kind of an alliteration. Most admired for its people, partnerships and performance. They have a cool culture. That's a company I'd like to work for. This one, now this one does everything right. It's only eleven words, really concise, and boy, is it aspirational. To be the world's, the world's most desired and successful premium car brand. I want a few guesses. Who is this? Because there's, there's the usual guess about three or four different manufacturers. Pardon me, Lexus. I always hear that one. Anybody else?
Mercedes.
Mercedes, I always hear that one. There's one more that we started hearing about five years ago. Tesla. There, I kind of gave it away. Exactly. Okay, hold on to your chairs. It's Ford. This, it's like, how could they be audacious? The world's most premium? Well, if you've ever been in a Ford Fusion, that is one amazing vehicle. It's about as premium as it gets.
It's too bad Bob Hines isn't here.
Pardon me?
That's right.
I didn't hear you.
One of our former council members was an executive vice president for Ford. He led the F-150 brand.
Well, here's what's, and the F-150 has sold more pickup trucks. I mean, they do the one fifty, two fifty, three fifty, and they actually get into four hundreds through six hundreds. They make a whole bunch of commercial vehicles, too. You just don't hear about those. But the one fifty is the, the, the most sell pickup truck in the history of automotive. Of course, they're the ones that came up with the truck a million years ago. But here's what's really cool. The premium is just so big. It's so audacious. So we talked about a BHAG, big hot, big hairy audacious goal. This is what I call a BHAVE, a big hairy audacious vision. So we're looking two years out. We don't want to get, you know, we don't want to go to the moon, but I want you to really push yourself. So anyway, that, that, that's some background and some examples. So let's get into the exercise. We've got some context. We've established our lanes, you know, kind of our, our boundaries here. So the game is called headlines. And I think of it as a game, but it really is an exercise. And I used to do visioning retreats and, and charge way more money than I would ever admit to anybody. Two day retreats. We'd be doing mission, vision and values. Visioning retreats, traveled all over the country, doing that, you know, again, three Fortune 500 companies. I prefer working with smaller companies. And if you go to my website, you won't see Microsoft, T-Mobile or Boeing. And done many projects with, with one of the divisions of Boeing. But the point is that it doesn't take, so what used to take a half a day, we can now do in about an hour, hour and fifteen. And here's the ironic part is that the shorter process, this lean approach actually produces a far better product than the one that extends for multiple hours. So again, it's a headlines exercise. So this is what I mean by headlines. It's a four step process. You have your agenda, so you know the four steps. But first is brainstorming. And brainstorming, we're only gonna take ten minutes. Traditional brainstorming, rapid boom, boom, boom. I'm gonna, you know, I've got like, what have I got? Nineteen of you, I think. So we usually a minute to fifteen entries, but I'm gonna change all the entries to nineteen because I want to make sure that everybody who wants to gets to contribute. That doesn't mean that you all have to. Not everybody is gonna have an idea or a contribution for every element of every exercise. But essentially, I just, you know, want everybody to participate. But here's why we call it headlines. You're gonna brainstorm what the media will write about Gig Harbor's amazing accomplishment. This article is gonna come out, you know, the day, like January second, after the holiday. It'd be the TNT, the. It'd be the TNT, the, the News Tribune. And there'll be, there's be this amazing top of the fold, front page article. About Gig Harbor and just the amazing thing that the elected officials and. The, the awesome staff that they have, they actually did this. It's newsworthy. So forget about vision right now. This first step, we're only thinking about really big audacious headlines. And the reason we call it a headlines exercise is because the average headline is only four to seven words. So we're going to be doing short bullets. We're not doing a book, right? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take these one at a time. Essentially, I'm going to go back to my forum here. And again, we're going to do, and like I said, I am happy. To add more, if we want to do that. But these are the headlines. So the idea is we're just really short. Concise statements. Now, what I want to do is rather than one, and a traditional brainstorming, by the way. Is that we just, we just say it out there. We don't talk about it, we don't judge it. We'll be talking about it and judging it in step two, okay? You'll get the, you'll get to talk and judge, but the point is that if Tracy says A, B, C. Five minutes later, Matthew says A, B, C, right? We're only brainstorming for ten minutes. That means that Lee cannot say, or Matthew, that's exactly what Tracy said five minutes ago. Because that's judgment. Now, I realize that's a ridiculous example, but remember, I mean, we're attentive, so I'm going to hold you to it. I don't care if there's duplicates or synonyms, they actually are, are actually very meaningful when you see similar things show up. So that's the idea, rapid fire, just ten minutes of brainstorming, and then we'll move to our discussion phase. So again, I, I can't see you all, so you're just going to have, I don't want you to raise your hand, I want you just to speak out. And, and give me your idea. And once you've given an idea, I'm going to ask you to not contribute another idea. Until everybody has had a chance to throw one out. And then we never have everybody do this, but let's say we end up at twelve. And then there are no other new contributions. And so at that point, I'll say, okay, those that have shared can share another, share a second. So those are, those are essentially our, our, that's our approach. So remember, A, B, C box, ugly typing. Who is going to start us off with the first News Tribune headline?
Climate resilience.
Climate resilient. I will actually clean this up later, resilient, and that's not even how to spell climate. That's really. Climate. Okay.
We got it.
Forget it. Anyway, I don't, who said that, by the way?
Jenny.
Jenny, okay, Jenny gets a star out of petty cash. Not only is that a concise bullet. But it is just really short and we know exactly what she's meaning. Robin, I think you were going to share.
Yes, and you're going to love spelling this word. Quintessential maritime village. I can't spell this word either, so don't feel bad.
Yeah, I'll, I'll clean this up later. And remember, we have lunches and breaks and all that. By the way, I'm issue, I'm putting together a report of all of your work that I will get to the mayor and Tony on Wednesday. So excellent. So everybody's playing really well, so somebody, somebody new, what's the next headline? Go ahead, Mary, I see your face.
Okay, I'll say best place to live, work, play and raise a family. And I know that's too long, but I think they're all important components.
I'm not doing it in order, I know, but that's okay. If, the reason that we don't judge and the reason we don't wordsmith. Is that we only do that with the ones that bubble up to the top. So I might not be getting it exactly, but thank you. But based on our voting process, those that surface to the top. Those are the ones that we will be wordsmithing. Okay, nice work, Mary. Who is next? Somebody new. Yeah, I know that there was somebody that was jumping in there, go ahead.
Say, most livable place, most livable city in the United States.
Okay, I love that. It is big, big thinking. United States, like we're the best. Way to go. Okay, thank you, Tony. Who is next? Somebody new, please.
Washington's destination city.
I love the way you guys are going, and I realize it's messy, people are talking over each other, but I can only see one thing at a time while I type. So whenever I see a face, I'm going to call on you to go, because I, and I love the fact you have a bunch of stuff. Already thinking about it. So who's next?
I'll go. Okay. Vibrant arts and cultural community.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. And again, you guys are just rocking it, because you're, you're really keeping these succinct. Remember, these are not end products, this is just a process. We will get to an end product that is elegant. So thank you, Brenda. Who's next? I never call on people because it's whoever contributes, contributes because they want to.
Fishing, fishing industry continues to add economic gains. Commercial fishing.
Okay, great, who's next?
Active and engaged citizenry. Like that one a lot.
I don't know how to spell that, but anyway, it's great. So that's a great headline, because then we say, hey, look at the, look what amazing things. That, you know, the, the, the people and work in Gig Harbor did. So this is all good stuff. Who's next?
Playground, playgrounds open for everyone.
Matthew, I will join you on the playground. I love.
Yeah, please do, but pluralize playgrounds, please.
You got it. Okay, who's up next?
Oh, small businesses thrive.
Boy, you guys are an easy group to work with. Who's next? Go ahead, Jeff, I see your face.
Okay, so this one's kind of boring, but I am an engineer. City provides desired and required services and support.
Desired and required what?
Services and support.
I'm going to ask everybody to never apologize for their contribution. You guys are at the table, because you've earned a place here. Of course, our electeds. People had enough confidence in you to either elect or appoint you, and. Our staff is the, what everybody identified was the, the biggest strength that we have. So no apologies, just get it out there. Thank you for your contribution, Jeff. There was somebody else, but I didn't see their.
Well, that's me.
Go ahead, Stacy.
How about Little Court goes big on innovation?
Compelling. Cool. Okay, we're going to keep doing new people and.
Responsive government.
Can you, that's great. Can you give it to me in a headline, though? Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to help you. And you, you edit it.
To citizens, you know, responsive government to citizens.
Well, no, I get it. So I'm just making it a headline. So tell me how you want me to change that. Again, we're not wordsmithing. I just want to know if I captured your idea. Yes, no?
That looks good, yeah.
Okay, great. Now, of course, if it bubbles up to the top, then we're going to be playing around a lot with it, so. Great, okay, who is next?
I'll try. A headline would be Gig Harbor voted most walkable and friendly and pedestrian friendly city.
Great. Awesome. And like I said, because I want everybody to have at least one opportunity, again, no requirement. But anybody new that hasn't chimed in yet?
I will. Harbor rates embraced roundabouts. I'm joking on that one. Gig Harbor voted number one place to visit in Washington State.
Excellent. Anybody else new that hasn't gotten up here? Yeah, they're not on the board.
I can't think of the, the, find the ending word, but we'll just go with Gig Harbor is a model city rich in history and community heart. I don't know if heart's the right word, but I'm just, I can't think of the words, I'm throwing that one out there.
So rich in history and what?
Community heart or community spirit or something like that. I don't know. Community something.
Well, well, that's a really good placeholder. Have you ever heard of the brand new town that just incorporated called New Charter? Gig Carber, have you heard of them? Pretty cool. Give me a second here, I need to give us a little bit more space, because everyone. I'm sorry, Zoom slows everything down, it's just ridiculous. I'm going to give myself some more space here. Okay. Anybody new that hasn't, hasn't contributed yet? And if you haven't, you don't have to. Again, I'm just, I want to be an equal opportunity person here. Any, anybody that hasn't gotten up. Have something they want to share? A headline? Okay, good enough. Let's go ahead and limit it to twenty. So limitations are actually a positive thing, and one thing that I've learned from. Working with many city councils is that the best councils understand that they need to make trade offs. You can never do everything that you want to do for everybody that you want to do it for. If you tried, you'd be bankrupt. And you're not, in fact, you're one of those cities that's in really, really good financial shape. So let's, um, let's agree to do some trade offs. I'm going to open it up to anybody who has. Contributed already or not, and we're going to, we're going to limit it to twenty. And you'll see why we need to limit it to a maximum of twenty, because it's going to be an eye chart here pretty soon. And just because I have twenty, that's a maximum, it's not a minimum. We can stop now unless somebody has another idea they want to share another headline. Go ahead.
Um, I, Gig Harbor is known. For its beautiful harbor parks and natural environment. Or maybe continues to be something.
That's okay. Well, if it bubbles up, we'll wordsmith it. Beautiful, say that again.
Harbor parks and natural environment.
I'm going to have to.
It's all good.
Yeah, it's, it's just a little bit longer than the headline, but we get what you're thinking. Very cool. So. Unless somebody else has a burning desire to get another headline up here, I'm going to, because we're, you know, we're, we've gone a little bit longer than our ten, which is just fine. But what I have to do now is lead us into the next exercise. And I've got to do this, I've got to shrink it, I'm sorry, but so you can see all of them, right? And then getting back to our, our deal here, now we're going to consolidate. This is where we actually get to chat a little bit. So the idea is that you are all going to review the entire portfolio. And identify where you see similar headline concepts, because we're going to delete, delete and combine. The idea is that, and I did see some similar thoughts, and we're just going to narrow the list down a little bit. I'm not trying to get hit a certain number. All I'm trying to do is take some of those similar headline concepts. And choose the one that you think is the most inspiring and then delete the other.
I thought we were going to have twenty headlines.
Well, I, I said twenty was a maximum, not a minimum, and I am just suggesting, did you have something that you wanted to add, Lee? Because I said, does somebody have something they want to add, and I didn't hear anything? Maybe you were muted. Do you have something you want to share?
Sure, I do. Gig Harbor traffic and parking concerns continue to decline.
Okay, got it. Excellent. Okay, are we ready to, ready to do our consolidation?
Could I put one in at the end, please?
Go ahead.
All right, it's quick. Gig Harbor leads in protection of urban forest.
I just make a quick note that Andrew might mention anyway, but regardless of what we choose. Laura, we should keep track of all these and we should accomplish each and every one, all of these.
So, yeah, to Robin's point, I'll be issuing a report on Wednesday, and everything that you contribute will be in that report. We will lose nothing that's contributed, so. Good recognition there, Robin. Okay, so let's, let's, let's move on. Let's take a look at this. Now, I want you to just, while you guys are, let me just, my gosh, this is so painful. Let me do a spell check here really quick. I know, isn't this scary? You have to look at my face. And some of these may be incorrect, but. Visit. I'll just fix that on my own. Community harbor traffic. Okay, close enough. So. Washington State. Okay, so you're looking at the entire portfolio. And as soon, but soon as somebody sees a duplicate, I want you to call out the number in column A. Would you go, you know, number three and number something else, and then we'll talk about it. This is also organic, just once you see a similar concept, just shout it out.
Hey, I'll go first. I think there's some, and these are all somewhat unique, but I think just in the common theme, I'll just put that this out there as a disclaimer. Before anyone's offended. So I think when we have quite a few that are like best and most, so best place work number three, four. Maybe even five could fit into that, and then again, down at.
So three.
Three, four, five.
Sorry, are you saying that they're, just because they use the best or the most, are you saying that these are all similar concepts?
I think they're similar concepts.
Okay, so three, four, and what, did you say five, two?
Three, four, five, fourteen. And fifteen.
Okay.
That's just me, so.
Right, no, no, we're going to have a conversation. So there is a proposal out there that three, four, five, fourteen and fifteen. Are essentially saying the same or similar things. I'd like other people to weigh in on that. My guess is that a, you know, some of them maybe, but maybe not all, but that's up to you guys, not up to me. So we've got best place to work, play, live and raise a family, most livable city. Was that Washington's most desired city? I messed that up.
It was destination city.
Oh, Washington's destination city. Thank you.
Oh, yes, I guess five would be a bit different, that's more geared. Oh, yes, I guess five would be a bit different. That's more geared towards. I guess tourism rather than living here. So he can drop five off.
Okay, thank you for correcting me, Fred.
I think, I think that five and 15 are tourism related and are not.
Yeah.
I agree with Seth's other notations, but I think the tourism. Five and 15.
So five and 15 are tourism related?
Yeah, I would agree with that too.
Got it. I I'm just color coding these. Because I want the conversation to be live, but at some point we got to make a decision. So color coding, great. Okay, so we have two proposals, three, four.
Five and 15, not 16.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, five and.
Five and 15.
Oh, I I did the wrong one. Thank you. Okay, well, I will fix that. Mary, thank you. That's a really good catch. All of you are responsible for keeping me honest here.
I I guess if we're doing. Anytime we say most, most of this or most of that, then.
Well, I caution you to do that.
Yeah.
Most is just a designation. So we're not, we're not combining adjectives. What we're doing is we're identifying. If the headline in terms of a concept is the same.
Okay, well, I think the walkable pedestrian friendly city.
You give me the numbers, please.
14 probably should be taken out of the yellow category. We could put that in something else later, but.
Okay, I'd like to hear other people chiming in. It is, are people thinking that's a sensible proposal?
I think I disagree. I think it should be kept yellow.
Okay.
And and I was actually going to add 17 and 17, 16, 17 and. Well, 16, 17, 18, 19, really to that category because they think they're all criteria that make us into. The most livable city, the best place to live and work, that kind of thing.
So you're saying that these would all go yellow?
That's my proposal, yes.
Okay, now whenever we have one person saying yes, one person saying no, I just leave it the way it is. Until we get, because right now we're just grouping. We haven't actually started the consolidation process. So when we actually consolidate, if we do not have, you know, an agreement. Then I'm going to do the thumbs exercise and and we'll let the majority play. But since one person thought it was the same and one person wasn't, I'm going to leave it the way it is for now. So right now we've got two different things going on. We're saying one, three, 14 and 16 through. 19 are essentially quality of place designations. Is that an accurate characterization?
I'd like to say that 19 and number one are more closely aligned. As like environmental protection or the environment.
I would loop in 17 with that, saying the natural environment in total is that part of that concern.
I actually was going to say nine, 17 and 19 because they're all about parks and the tree canopy. And the natural environment. I thought those three. Comingle.
Uh, you you added nine to that, too?
Okay.
And I would add one to that as well.
Yeah, number.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is that climate, environment, parks.
Okay, so we got a lot of grouping here. That's going to make voting really fast. That's great. And all, by the way, just because we're grouping, this is the conversation. By the way, this is the longest part of the process. So I don't want to push this too hard. So we're doing great. We're doing great. More proposals. Right now we've got three different groups. We've got one that's more environmental. We've got one that's more quality. So that's the orange, the the quality of places, the yellow. And then in terms of destination tourism, etc., that's the green. And so these proposals are awesome. I'd like to open it up to hear other ideas.
So I would suggest that number seven and number 10 are directly economic issues. And they should be their own separate group.
Number seven and number 10 are economic issues?
Yes.
And Andrew, I I agree with that. I'd like to ask a question, too. Is it possible? Possible for things to be in two different groups?
I suppose so.
Well, the reason I ask that is that like vibrant arts and culture playgrounds, some of those things. That within the. The one that's bright yellow right now. I forget what we're, the aspirational quality of life, those kinds of things. And I just.
I tell you what, let's go ahead and do that, Mary. Tell me which one of the other colors that you think should be in yellow.
Okay, I would say.
Give me the numbers. Number six?
Six, and I would put nine there. And I would also put 17 there.
Any others?
I think 11, 12 and 18 should be in a separate category.
11. 12. And what category 11 and, excuse me, so 11? And 12, what is the category?
Well, solving traffic. It would be required services and support.
I agree with that.
I do, too.
There's an alternate idea there. What if we have active and engaged citizenry? So number eight, number 11.
Laura, hold on just a second. I've got to finish the other one. What was the other one that would be in that service? Did you say 18?
I said 18.
Thank you. Okay, so this is how I am doing multiple groupings. I'll tell you what, though, I don't like these colors. Because they're too close to the blue. So let me find. A different color that's. It's not co-op there. I wanted, I needed more distinct color. Okay, so now we have one, two. Three, four, five different categories. And by the way, this is great, but the the idea here is not to consolidate it down to a really, really short list. But the idea is to take concepts that are really duplicates. I mean, don't, don't get way out till I, oh, we're going to group as many as we can in here, but that are legitimate duplicate headlines. And by the way, we are still working with headlines. They're the ones that should be consolidated.
So here's.
Any other inputs? I'm sorry, Laura, you were up next.
Sorry, here's a consideration. So Washington's destination city and Gig Harbor voted.
Can you give me them by the number, please?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Number five and number 15 seem to be the same thing.
Well, number 15, they already are the same thing.
Sorry.
Yeah, see, they're both the same color. Anyway, so you are affirming that those two are together. Don't be sorry. I'm screwing up like every two minutes here. I'm not apologizing.
So I think.
I apologized every time I screwed up, we'd be here till Sunday morning.
I think the other grouping that we could probably do is city, the things that are involved with city staff and services. Uh, which would be responsive government. So 13, 12, 11, uh, and eight.
13, 12, 11 and eight, did you say?
Yep, and then six as well. Arts and culture would probably fall under our arts commission.
That was actually my same idea. Those are services the city provides to people. It's just service oriented.
They're all the municipal services. Yeah.
I disagree with six going into there because to me.
Hold on, hold on here. Mary, hold on, please. I can only do one set of instructions at once. So let's get back to. And then we'll have the conversation, but I can't have multiple things going on. So and I couldn't do it if I was live either. So you said. 13. 12 and 11 and what else? Who made the last contribution? Speak up, please.
Oh, it's Laura.
Laura, need to hear from you, please.
I think she said eight.
Did we lose Laura?
She may have had to take care of her daughter for a moment.
Understood. No.
I had to change a diaper. Um, I. Uh, I will be right back. It's another.
No, no worries at all. We just want to make sure we captured something. So Mary, you are next up. I I think you disagreed with something.
Oh, I thought that we were put, that there was discussion about putting six into that same category. And I did not want to put six into that category because to me, having a vibrant arts and cultural community is part of the livability. Aspect that's in the bright yellow grouping.
Gotcha. Does anybody have any heartburn over that? If you do, speak now.
So what was that? Can you repeat that, please?
There was, there was discussion about putting number six into the dark green category. And I was objecting to that because to me it's part of the bright yellow category, which is the livability ones.
Thank you. I agree with that.
I agree with that as well. A vibrant arts and culture community while we can do things that helps encourage that. It's the community that does not that, not the city.
Number eight and number 16 to me should be grouped together.
Just a second here. I've got to find a better color here. This is too dark. That's too close.
It's the light green.
Well, I've already got a light green.
Yeah.
I'm going to do gray. Anyway, essentially, this one doesn't need a sidebar because it is gray. And this one didn't, wasn't assigned, so it's gray.
Well, I think eight, I I'd like to see eight go into yellow because it has to do active and engaged citizenry. It has to do with community spirit, I would think.
Okay, I was just finishing my color coding. Would you please share that again?
Yes, I think eight, active and engaged citizens should go with number 16 and the yellow. A model his city rich in history and community spirit, active and engaged citizen would be.
And what color am I making those?
Yellow. 16 is already yellow. Eight would be yellow.
Eight, whoops. So you're saying, so we've got actually eight, this would be yellow. Got it. Thank you.
I think that 13 is more a result of 11 and 12. I don't know if they go in the same category, but.
I got it. So Lee's talking about the chicken and the egg. And and we really don't need to worry about that. I mean, i- if something is a result of something else, typically the vision, a vision is the highest strategic strategy and a strategic plan. So essentially, this is yellow. Let me, whoops. And which means I can get rid of that. Let me just finish color coding here. Everything is classified, so we need to start going from conversation. To a decision. So right now you've classified everything. It doesn't mean that they're classified correctly. But what we're going to do is we're going to take these one at a time. So this is how we're going to do this. Why didn't that work? Very interesting. Oh, I know why. It's operator error, my fault. What category is this? That was that the livable quality of place?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and.
I would say number two is also.
You said this is quality of place?
Yeah.
Well, so a whole bunch of other people said that it's more environmental. So let's just, let me finish the the classification first here. So.
Are you just defining the categories?
Yeah, I'm defining the category. If we can't agree on the categories.
Sure.
Actually, did I? Why did that go away? Sorry, folks. Operator error again.
Look it again.
I am. There we go. Okay. So now I gotta go get this color. And essentially. What the heck is it? Doesn't even show me. I am trying to game that color. I've never, to be honest, I've never had this many categories before. Um, out of all these retreats. So you guys are, you guys are special. You've got a, you've got a keen eye. Nope. There it is. This category is what? Is this environmental or what?
No, I think one and 20 are environmental.
Well, no, that this is, yeah, this, this, I'm asking for this, the, the, all I'm asking for is the title of this category.
Of that color category, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, title. So I guess you'd say environmental in the general sense. Environment is everything that we live in.
Got it. Okay, so now this one. We're going to do. We got to classify. It is green. And there it is. Okay, and so this is. This is the tourist category, right?
Tourism.
I don't agree that that's tourism.
What do you think it is?
I know the categories, which are number six and number 16.
Yeah, we're just talking about categories.
So don't, this doesn't go across. It's just the colors.
Okay, I guess I don't understand.
So okay, it'll be really clear when I get done.
Yeah.
Now we gotta go, we gotta go the blue. And the blue is. That's it. Okay, and so blue is economic development. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And now we have gray. See, Mary, all we're doing is we're not making decisions. We're just classifying right now.
Okay. Sorry, I'm a little slow.
No, don't worry about it. Um, active, engaged citizens, award best government. So what is this one? I I'm looking at those two and I I'm not able to divine the category. Somebody's got to help me.
Service.
City. About responsive government.
I like that.
Excellent. And then we've got one more category, which is this really ugly brown. You can tell I'm not a designer.
Municipal services.
That's good.
Okay, uni services. That's pretty gross. Okay, so this is how we do it. We take these one at a time. We do not co-mingle. So essentially what we're saying is that number four, number five, number seven, number 15. 17 and 19 are all under the quality of place categories. I'd like, so what I'd like to hear is an argument for agreement. And if somebody disagrees, then I want to hear their argument. So does anybody disagree? That all of those are under the banner of quality of place?
And are you also including number 10 and number 18 in that as well?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mary. Very, very good catch because those have multiple class of, multiple classifications. And and to be honest, that is a, another new thing that I've I've never experienced. So I'm learning something new today.
So I would agree, yes, those are about all the place.
Okay, so do we also agree? Well, I guess that would be a quality of place thing, too, right? And then. This would be quality of place?
Yes.
Okay, are you guys okay with me taking the environmental? No. Excuse me, are you okay with me taking 10? And taking 18 and making them yellow? That's essentially what we're talking about here.
I think we need a definition for what quality of place. I think we need a definition for what quality of place is because there's a lot of things that fall under quality of place.
Well, uh, quality of place is kind of a standard municipal designation. It involves, you know, places, uh, the quality uh of places where people would want to move to, that they'd wanna raise their families. Um, you know, that they'd wanna work. And so I agree, it's a a broad category, but keep in mind that this is a process. We're only dealing with process at this point.
Well, I'm just saying that uh you you wanna live, if you're, if you're looking at quality of place, a quintessential maritime village is also a quality of place.
Well, but y- your colleagues are saying that that's more environmental. So before we get into environmental, remember.
I'm not, I'm not sure we said it was environmental. You may be mistaken.
Oh, okay. Um, tell me what it is then.
Quality of place.
Are you saying that everything that is this is uh this color is quality of place?
No, I'm saying number, I'm saying number three is quality of place.
Yeah, I would think number three would fall under quality of place.
Okay, well, let me, let me just reclassify that. I may have made a mistake.
I I actually think number one is also quality of place because you have to have a. You have to have.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share an observation. Um, I'm I'm gonna go timeout. You guys are hyper categorizing these whole things. I need you to go back to headlines. So a cli- a headline on climate control is nothing even close to the fact that we have this amazing harbor and this amazing maritime village. They're two separate headlines. I think you guys are, uh, so this is some coaching I'm giving you. Um, you you guys are trying to throw everything into a big category. That is not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is merely take a look at headlines that are essentially saying the same things. And I'm looking at these groupings. This is about a harbor. This is about where you wanna live, work and play. Two different things. This is the most livable city. Um, now these could be um part of the chicken and egg. This is about culture. I mean, these are completely different headlines. Would anybody like to share? Um, uh, share an um kind of an opinion of what my observation is? We're kinda going out, we're kinda going out of, out of orbit here, to be honest.
I think two and twenty are 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 good in the categories they're in, because they actually take an action. Uh, they're not something that exists like, or you know, it's.
We both environmental.
We have to take an action to achieve uh the climate resilience and the lead in the protection of urban forest. Where, where the other ones just happen to be the great place we live.
That's a cogent argument. So what I'm hearing you say is that these two should stay in environmental protection. Um, I don't see this as in that same category.
I don't either. I almost feel like that is about embracing and being inclusive. And I feel like that's maybe missing here a little bit.
So you're saying that this should be its own category?
No, I don't know if it's enough for its own category. I'm just saying that we don't have a place that talks about the embracing inclusivity. And to me, that's at the heart of that playground's being open for everyone.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Matt if, if he really meant uh not necessarily open for everyone, but all inclusive to everyone. Is that?
No, I actually, all population.
Say that again, Matt?
All ages, all backgrounds.
And all, and all different abilities.
Yeah.
Right. But I didn't, I wasn't talking about inclusive playground by the definition of inclusive playground.
Then what word would you use?
Oh, um, opportunity. Play, opportunity.
Okay, so um, one thing I don't want, okay, I'm just gonna put play. And I'm gonna take the color away. So I need to get back to um my observation. And that is that that you're tr- you're you're categorizing. So Lee said this and this, number one, our number, um. Excuse me, let me get back to this. Lee said that number one and number twenty are both about, you know, protecting the environment. Uh, that I I think that's kinda hard to disagree with. Would anybody disagree with that?
I don't disagree with it. If we're gonna say environmental, then we may wanna change that category, which would include one and nineteen as environmental protection. Environmental on the base of the word means everything around.
Okay, I tell you what, we're, we're not gonna get into wordsmithing categories. We gotta focus, folks, on um connecting or combining headlines that are saying the same thing. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna get in the weeds of continuing to change the labels of our categories. Because that process isn't gonna help us.
Let me suggest something. So as I'm looking at this, I'm seeing three major themes come out.
Give me one.
Livability, environmental stewardship and economic vitality.
I like that. Tony gets a gold star.
I could take every one of these things.
And what was the, so yeah, this is great. You're helping us get off high center. What was the third one, Tony?
Economic vitality.
And I've got. Environmental stewardship, sorry.
Can I add one more, Tony? Just to be sick. I would add.
Let him finish three.
Hold on. Vitality. Not stewardship, but vitality.
Economic vitality. Okay, what was that a person's point?
I was gonna add excellence of municipal services, the work of the city.
I agree with that, Brenda. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, can we take these as the new category? Because I think that this is gonna get us off high center. You know, I may have let, and and this is operator error. This is um, this is your facilitator trying to really allow you to to go through the process. I probably should have chimed in um a little bit earlier than I did. And so I will apologize for that. My question is, can we take all of these and put them, well, the play thing doesn't work, but a- and no offense, Matt, but you're not gonna develop a vision statement out of playgrounds.
So I I've, I've written a headline that takes the three that I um just described and I could uh.
Let's not go there yet. Oh, I see. What you're saying is you're, you're consolidating everything into one, uh, one headline. Okay, so that actually makes sense. Which one are you talking about? What number?
Uh, the one you have here.
Three or four?
I I have one, two and three in one headline. Of twelve words.
Okay, let's hear it.
Gig Harbor leads the way in livability, environmental stewardship and economic vitality.
I can add something for the last.
Just a second here. But this, they can go with your slow facilitator. Leads the way. Keep going. In.
Livability. Environmental stewardship.
Yep.
And economic vitality. So just those first three categories.
Cause so what you've done is that you you've gone from categorizing to actually writing a vision statement. And the only reason we could accept that is if everybody said Eureka, we've landed.
Can I add for number four?
Yeah.
I would just instead of saying and economic vitality, just say comma, economic vitality and excellence in the delivery of municipal services.
And I would shorten that up a little bit and just say, and excellent uh municipal services.
Perfect.
Or you can say through, through excellent.
Well, I tell you what, before we get into wordsmithing, let me get everything up here. So uh Gig Harbor leads the way in livability, environmental stewardship, comma, economic vitality and municipal services. Is that it?
I would say excellent, or yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna put, wait, you know, um, if if everybody agrees, this is the uh phrase that we're gonna wordsmith. We'll wordsmith later, but I don't wanna waste time wordsmithing something that doesn't actually surface as being essentially what you you've done, and it's not a bad thing, by the way, but you've jumped over um one of the four steps. So, which is okay, but it's only okay if everybody goes, yeah, we're Eureka. We have a concept that we can now start wordsmithing.
And I'm happy to say Eureka. I think this is a great uh statement.
Well, it's certainly got the bones of one. We're gonna make it better. So I thank you for chiming in. I really appreciate that. Other people? Are are we, are we close enough to actually start maybe trying to make this um, the statement?
Eureka.
I like it.
Excellent. So rather than going around the entire room nineteen times, is there anybody that's absolutely vehemently opposed to having this as, it it's a start, it's not the finish? Is anybody absolutely opposed to having um working on this as the starter for a vision statement? Essentially, we have bridged the gap from headline to vision, because this is very, very vision-esque. Um, it's also very powerful because it is speaking it into the present. You know, we we don't wanna lead, we are leading. So uh, is, does anybody, in fact, um. I mean.
It's also a beehag.
Yeah, good point, Mary. It's a beehag. I wanna look at everybody. Um, again, that's not a final statement. My question is, is that a good starting place to begin framing uh the city of Gig Harbor's vision? It's very vision-esque. I am seeing thumbs all over the place and I haven't heard anybody. Okay, so we have a a way more than a super majority. So thank you all. So uh with that being said, let's um, let's go to step four. We still got some work to do. Um, Tony, uh, you keep that up. I'm gonna owe you money. No, I mean.
This is why we pay him the big bucks.
That was really impressive. I'm I'm just saying. Okay. Okay, for some reason, uh, my, I lost my formatting. Let me go back here. I apologize. Zoom just slows everything up and you click and you wait for thirty seconds. And um it doesn't do anything. Crumb. What you don't see is I've got my um, I've got my bar. Um, my taskbar everywhere. There we go. Okay.
We agreed there was no need for apologies.
Yeah, I should shut my face. Uh, Lee, uh, thank you. Uh, you're a hundred percent correct.
And Zoom is very challenging to work with, Andrew. We all know that, so.
Yeah.
No worries.
Thank you. I appreciate the, okay, so this is not a final statement, but it's a darn good um start. Let's go ahead and uh spell check this, so we're not working with so much ugliness. Livability. Stewardship. Okay, I'm gonna have to, um, I'm gonna have to have help on that. It's so poorly written that it won't even. Okay, let me try again. Steward. Yep.
Stab the P. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so this is the bones of the beginning. So first of all, um, a- again, channeling my inner Tony, it meets all the criteria of all of the best practices of a um a great vision statement. It's short, it's really easy to remember. No, you've combined livability, environmental stewardship, economic development and municipal services. Um, I'm putting my resident hat on, I'm putting my business owner hat on. I can't imagine anybody would say, oh, that's just a bunch of crap. It's actually quite elegant. So it's short, it's inspirational, uh, it's powerful. Um, we were, it's not like an aspirate. It's, we're doing this. We lead. Uh, um, econo- uh, Gig Harbor leads the way in livability, economic stewardship. Let me get that.
Oh, environmental stewardship.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got it spelled right. I just can't read. Environmental stewardship, economic vitality and municipal services. So we lead the way in municipal services. We lead the way in livability. Quality of place. We lead the way in environmental stewardship and we lead the way in economic vitality. So I'm gonna shut up, come up for air and um I'm gonna leave it up there so you can see it. But I'd um, I'd like to hear uh from all of you.
I have a comment. I love, I love all of this. I wouldn't change any of what we have here. I just feel like it doesn't have anything to do with our character and maybe this is not the place for it. So maybe that's not supposed to be in a vision statement, but it doesn't talk about like what kind of our iconic character of being a maritime village or a fishing.
You know, that's really, that's a really good observation. And uh since I'm kind of a marketing communications expert. Actually, I think you are too, aren't you? Don't you have a PR background?
That's me.
Oh, okay, Mary. I'm sorry. I knew I had a PR guru here, but I really appreciate what Robin said. And I wanna share a distinction between those two concepts, again, based on prac- best practices. Doesn't mean that I'm right. So um, the difference between what you said in terms of a ki- quality characteristics of the city, kind of, it's a brand personality is what you're talking about. And a vision statement, a vision statement articulates um an aspiration, um, a desired future. Um, the legacy that you're gonna leave. What you talked about is very important. And the city should do that, but that has to do with marketing communications. That has to do with um promoting our brand. You know, just um, just the, the, the unique character and personality of our, our community. So I think you need to do both, but Robin, are you seeing that they're, they kinda have two different utilities?
Yeah, I am. And that's why I said I wasn't sure if maybe, maybe that doesn't belong in the visioning statement. I just.
Well, I tell you what, though.
Could we say something? And if we, I totally am fine either way, but it could say something like Gig Harbor. Cause aren't we the maritime city? America's maritime city or, you know.
Yeah, that's our slogan, the maritime city.
If it doesn't belong in the visioning statement, that's fine. It's just that is, we wanna maintain that present and future. And so I don't know if that's what makes us so great in my mind.
I think that's very good idea, Rob. And I think putting uh maritime city in there at the beginning, uh, which also recognizes our heritage.
But again, I guess I'm gonna advocate for what Andrew just said too, because I'm not sure that that's part of the vision statement. I think it's, it goes in a different place.
And that's why I put it in the parking lot, because I think it's really, really important. Uh, a- and what's funny is I say I use. I can't spell character. I'm a branding guy and I can't spell character. That's really sad. Anyway, so typically we use the parking lot if somebody says something that's kind of off topic. What Robin said is not off topic. Um, I'm putting in the parking lot because it needs to be in the report and I think it should be addressed. But whoever the last person was is a hundred percent correct. It it, you know, defining the uh, the characteristics and the brand strategy of your city is not uh the job of a vision statement.
No, I would.
But it was so, what she said was so powerful and so important that I had to get it in the parking lot, because it's gonna be in your report. Uh, bran- branding a city, I mean, there's a whole science behind branding a city. Uh, and I act, oh, look at that beautiful little baby.
One, the other thing, Andrew, I don't know where, how you do this, but when I've done values before too, also values are things that we can never be away from, that we one hundred percent have to stand behind. And so that's where some of that character can come in too. I know I'm jumping around and I'm sorry.
No, I don't think you are. I I I think you are going right to what we are talking about. And I'm putting, i- it's important enough that I'm putting it in the parking lot.
I think we have, I think we have a brand. We just need to enhance it.
Well, I, well, and maybe you have a brand, but maybe we're not effectively communicating it.
I think we need to be more consistent in our communications about what our brand is. And to note, our brand guideline book is about ten years old. So we have an opportunity to redo that. And I think that's an important part to stick in the parking lot.
Excellent. And so I wanna touch on the core values. I completely agree with Mary. Um, so Um, so the the three of them are the highest strategic strategies, mission, vision, values. Mission is your statement of purpose. It defines who you are, what you do, and whom you serve. A vision statement is defining your aspirational and your desired future. Uh, a core values is a set of guiding principles um and a code of conduct that define the organizational or the city's culture. So those are best practice definitions, and um I agree with everything that Mary said, even though I might distinguish a bit differently. But I don't think one thing that anybody's brought up is off topic. I I think it's because we're talking about the highest strata of um our our city. So I love what I'm hearing.
Andrew, would it make the vision statement too wordy if we said something like Gig Harbor comma, a maritime city, leading the way in livability, blah, 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 or Gig Harbor comma, Ameri- the Ameri- a maritime city that leads the way in blah, 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 like somehow adding that.
No, I I I'm I'm tracking with you.
You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying. Yes. Um, so I I will give you, first of all, I'm not the boss. All I do is share best practices. So I'm gonna share the best practice and distinguish between the two, just like I did with Robin. The mer- so trying to get everything in the kitchen sink into a mission statement or a vision statement or a set of core values um is gonna, it's gonna make the entire thing benign. People won't remember it. It's too clumsy. It's like, I I've seen people try to add like six different adjectives in a vision statement just to appease everybody. So to your point, Mayor, um Tracy, um, what you're talking about is more of a tagline. And frankly, it's a tagline that's already an element of your existing logo.
That's true. It is. It is. It is on our logo.
And and it's it's great. See, that's, it's actually defining. So Gig Harbor. And it's not saying a maritime city. It's saying the maritime city. You might even want to add another E. It's like, you know, we're it. It's very vision-esque. But um, the, yeah, it's it's great. Uh, the point is, and I'm I'm gonna go back to.
I get it. I get what you're saying.
Okay.
So let me jump in here and make a comment. Um, the term livability, I chose that one very deliberately because just about everything everyone has been talking about when it comes to the maritime uh nature of the community, uh all the parks that we have, what we want is played, the walkability, all that, all of those things fall under the area of livability. So as we go through the process of deciding what are the things we're going to be working on for the next couple of years, we can, as for example Laura talked about, do a rebranding or a refreshing of our brand uh in a way that really takes a look at what are those things that make this a really cool, livable place to be? When it comes environmental stu- the environmental stewardship, we've talked about uh tree retention, climate cha- change and those sort of things. Economic vitality, I think, almost speaks for itself when it comes to small businesses thrive. Uh, companies want to locate here. Uh, and then obviously municipal services, we want uh our municipal services to be the absolute best that they possibly can be. And I think you've got the staff uh and the resources to do that.
Well, um, yeah, I'll let you guys chime in on this, but I mean, it's absolutely elegant. It meets every criteria for the best practices. Um, and um, you know, I, you guys know Tony. This isn't exactly his uh first rodeo. He is known as a thought leader in the broader community in this area. And he is so good at what he does. He's able to call his own shots. He's retiring. None of us want him to. I mean, people like me that aren't even part of the city don't want to lose Tony. The point is that he's got some serious chops.
And we're not gonna let him go.
You're not the first person to say that. That that is hilarious.
That a headline? City administrator held hostage.
You know what? I like the way Jenny thinks. So here's my recommendation. Uh, I, my recommendation is that um, well, you can go one of two ways. One, you can say, drop the mic. Um, you know, futzing around with this is actually gonna make it um less powerful. And instead of more, in other words, when I see people just trying to do this and do that, they actually denigrate the final product. Uh, this thing is so elegant. It covers every single um headline idea. Everything falls into these categories. And um, the other thing I'm gonna say is we've got about nine minutes before lunch, so our timing is good. There is what, so you could say, yeah, we're gonna adopt this. Uh, is it designed to be where everybody said it's a hundred percent perfect? Um, if you actually, everybody felt that way, I'd be very worried about you. But if you can all like it or live with it, I would say move on. And if there are one or more people, well, actually, if there's just one person, everybody else's thumbs up. Remember the majority rules. Uh, so you have two options. One, accept this as um um a uh complete and elegant product. Or two, say, you know what, we're gonna take this and we're gonna play around with it. Um, you're not gonna play around with it more today. This is why I say the roles and responsibilities is that we we move it to committee if we can't come to an agreement. So Gig Harbor leads the way in livability, environmental stewardship, economic vitality, and municipal services.
Andrew, can you add the AL to environmental, please?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Laura has her hand up.
I can't see the hands. Uh, so.
I think she.
Please.
I forgot. Sorry, hand down.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I'm assuming that at the end of the day, this this vision statement that we're looking at, we will also take a relook at at the end of the day.
At the end of today or at the end of some other day?
Today, we will.
It won't be today because we won't have time. We are on a jam-packed agenda. So that's why I said, Jerry, we move it off to committee.
This is where, this is where we may take it to a study session, Jenny, where we can have um further discussion if necessary, and if we need to have some public comment or public interaction that if that's desired of the council, then we can also do that as well.
Thank you.
And I wasn't gonna go here, but Andrew, if if I'm allowed, I want to ask staff a question because I know this was something that was extremely sensitive to our staff. Does this vision statement that we've just sort of come up with, is this in line at all with the vision statement that was crafted a little over four years ago? Or is it way off?
And then the next question should be, does it need to be aligned?
Does it need to be? Does it need to be? Or or is this, is this something that that would that would line up with what your original visioning was back, back a few years ago? Because I don't know what that statement is. I don't know what that vision statement is, but I know that there was, there was some issues surrounding the visioning process, you know, or I I'm trying to be very diplomatic here. So I just want to know, are i- is staff comfortable with with this process? And how this has shaped up? Does it line up with what you originally had in mind uh that you worked so hard on a few years ago? And and is it something you would want to take into a study session to to talk about further? I know that's a lot of questions, but.
I will need to, we need to have a fairly quick answer and move on. So I'm gonna open it up to any of our directors. Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, if I if I can just respond, I think the issue that most staff, and I won't speak on behalf of everyone here, but the issue with our last vision statement was that it was crafted and mandated by one person, and it did not go through a city council for approval. Did not go to staff for consideration. It was just uh foisted upon us. And I don't know that it's entirely inconsistent with what we've developed here. It's just um, we'll be a lot more supportive, I think, of something that we know that the entire council is supportive of.
Great. I guess the question I have is, are you guys okay with the direction with where we've gone to?
I think that this vision statement is very succinct and uh general. Um, and I think you know, our, we can take those in each of our respective departments and work toward the goals, the the major goals that are outlined in that statement in our own, with through our own lens. So I I think it's great.
Any other directors like to uh chime in? I I really appreciate Tracy's question. Very inclusive.
And thank you, directors, for answering that because this was important to me very much so that you that you were all comfortable and involved in this, in this process.
So we've, we've taken the process. I put it in the parking lot. Do you mind if I do a little coaching? Again, I I've been screwing up um more than all of you combined when it comes to um, the process of strategic planning. There's three levels of strategic planning. There's strategic, operational, and tactical. We're dealing with strategic. Most people think that developing goals and objectives is strategic. It's not. It's operational. But I'm not gonna go down that path. So here is my coaching. Um, eh, you will never, ever, and nor should you try, get a vision statement that everybody's gonna go perfect. And if you attempt to do that, you'll never get anything done. It it'll just never happen. It'll end up in a folder and it will never be on, it should be uh above the scroll on, at the top of your website. It's it's that big. Okay, so don't effort to make it perfect. There is um uh in uh planning, there is an axiom that I know many of you have heard, and that is uh perfect is the enemy of perfectly good. You will never get perfect in the mind of a hundred percent of your staff and a hundred percent of your electives, electeds. Don't try. Here, and if you want to take this to study sta- if you, if you feel like you have to do that, you're the boss. That's your prerogative. Somebody said something about uh bringing this up to citizen review. We've all heard, um, we've all heard the axiom, too many cooks in the kitchen. I guarantee if you take it to citizen review, it will be completely dismantled. Um, so how many people do we have here? We got nineteen. Uh, I don't know what everybody's hourly worth is, but let's say the average is a hundred dollars. I'm sure it's probably more that. I'm just going, okay. You just spent three thousand dollars of your time and money in the last ninety minutes. So um the more people you bring into the kitchen, the greater your risk of wasting everything that you've done. And so what I always counsel my clients, I'll say this last thing and then I'll shut up, is do not ever reverse engineer the process. Because you end up with uh an inferior product and wasting uh the time you put into it. It it's it's a, it's a beautiful piece of work. So with that, um, I've got on the, I've got on the parking lot that it's going to a study session. You can, you can decide to not do that, but it's gonna go in the report. Because like I said, I'm not gonna forget things. I'm gonna put things in writing. So with that said, you've done a great job. Um, and we did it on time. And Tony, thank you uh for hurting all of us kiddies, including me. Um, so it's lunchtime. Uh, what I'm, and we're, we're starting at noon and we're starting on time. Before we do our thirty minute lunch, uh I think this would be a good time to open it up and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be uh perfectly candid. Uh, there is no fault honesty. Um, you know, if anybody is, has any heartburn over what we've produced or even heartburn over the process. You know, I've got a thick skin. Uh, I really want you to feel comfortable sharing because it could be informative to our afternoon.
Now, I I think that the vision statement is is excellent foundation. And when we go to a study session, I don't think we should uh forget what Andrew said about adjectives and and too much wordsmithing. I see it as a a very good thing with some challenges. And the challenge is, now that we make a vision statement, we have to do it. We can't just put it above the scroll on our website and say, look how nice that is. We, the leaders, leadership of this city, need to make our vision happen. And I'm sure that's gonna be coming uh in work sessions to follow. But we can't forget that. That's not just a pretty statement.
I want to add one more comment. And that is the the choice of the word leads. Uh, was also very deliberate. Uh, my sense of this council, my sense of this staff is good enough is not good enough that we have the talent and we have the resources to do something really amazing in this community. And put it out there and say, we are going to be the ones that are are uh leading when it comes to everything that we do. Yes, we're going to look and see what everyone else is doing and, you know, try not to reinvent the wheel and all that. But we are not just gonna sit back and wait for things to happen to us. We are gonna make things happen for us and for our community.
Um, what Tony just said is actually seriously supported in the SWOT analysis, and we'll get to that right after lunch. Um, I really do want to keep the floor open for anybody else's comments, good, bad, or ugly.
Just a question, just a quick comment from me. Tony, uh, thanks for doing this vision statement. Our job will be able, our job is to make that a legacy that we can work on so that your vision is what we'll leave behind when we're done.
Well, Roger, I appreciate that, but you need to take credit because um almost everybody on uh in this group actually contributed to the process. The headlines, and it was the categorization that you were leading to that led Tony. Tony didn't have this idea this morning. He developed it by um looking at the entire portfolio, listening to the conversation. Look at the categories that we were playing with and struggling a little bit. Struggle's not bad. And then he said, wow, I've got a way of bringing this all together. And so don't give Tony all the credit. He, you know, he's smarter than your facilitator, but don't give him all the credit. You guys.
Thanks for boiling it down, Tony.
Yeah, he he did a great job of boiling your work down. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I I would like to ask that on behalf of the staff, that they not dilute our vision statement. I think it's really great just how it is. And working in the court um realm, I I I deal with a lot of attorneys who are very intelligent. And um, when you get too many words, things get left to interpretation or or if it's too diluted, they will spin it and misunderstand it and it it'll just, you'll lose its uh, you know, I don't know.
Lose its power.
Please don't dilute it.
Thank you, Stacy. I'm gonna keep this discussion going. I I want, so I, let's go to, let's go to lunch five minutes late. Um, everybody having a place to talk right now is really important. And I love what I'm hearing. Uh, if I didn't love what I hear, who cares? It's not my place to say. So I want to keep um the Zoom open to make sure that everybody has something they want to share, gets to share.
One of the groups that I've done, that I did visiting for previously in my PR career, one of the things that we did, because we kept getting off of, off the topic was it's kind of goes to what Andrew said of putting it on the the head of the website. We had it on all of our nameplates in board meetings. And it wasn't on the front. So if you were the public, you saw Mary Barbara, council member. But what I saw, every time I looked ahead at somebody was Gig Harbor is, leads the way in. I saw the vision statement, and so it's a constant reminder of where we're trying to go. And uh, I'm getting into implementation, but I would just encourage us and kind of goes to what Stacy said too of not diluting it, but let's focus all of our energy there and make sure that everything that we do is going toward that that vision.
I actually have mine on the back of my business card.
I've seen that too. I like that.
Mary, I so appreciate what you're talking about, and you're really reinforcing what Lee said is that um, when the exercise is done, that's when our work begins. We have to live this, right? Uh, here's my definition of leadership. I so appreciate what I'm hearing. What, this is what leaders do. They uh establish and communicate the vision. They provide the resources for achieving that vision, and they lead by example while doing so. And everything I just said, you've already said in different ways. Any, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. Um, this is such a great thing to work together on this vision statement. When I first, you know, was thinking of running and looked through all the city websites, there wasn't, that was one thing I felt was missing, was the vision statement. And here's our five goals that we all, as a council, agree on. Here are the ways we're gonna do it. was the vision statement. And here's our five goals that we all as a council agree on. Here are the ways we're going to do it. And, you know, when I first met with Tony and Tracy, I said, can we create a vision? Can we create a statement? Can we create a plan? I'm analytical. So seeing this happen makes me so happy because we can be proactive, not reactive. Instead of reacting to issues as they come up, we can think through things and have a plan. And I'm analytical. And I can get into analysis paralysis, but as I had a great professor tell me once, done is better than perfect. So I'm going to take your advice.
Well, thank you, Brenda. And what you're saying is supported in the SWOT analysis, which we will see this afternoon. There were concerns that there's a lack of vision that because of the lack of vision, our priorities kept shifting. We were reactive instead of proactive. But a vision is your North Star, and I will say this, and then I'll open it up again when we come back from lunch. I want to make sure you have enough time to eat. Because I still want to get back together at 12:30. Because I want to get I want to get you out of here five minutes early, 3:55. But one thing that I think is so amazing about the work that you guys did is that that vision statement with those three huge categories. Right? Livability, environmental stewardship, economic vitality. I'm not even reading it. I'm looking at you guys. Remember I said short and easy to remember? I actually I I'm not looking at anything, and I remember the vision statement. The point is that it is absolutely perfect. And it will make, it will actually lead your process and make setting goals so much easier because you've already defined the categories your goals will fall under. Goals support the vision, work plans, which are the responsibility of your great staff, support the goals. So rock and roll, beautiful product, look at your clock. Let's come back. Let's come back in 25 minutes. Okay, I'll see you all in 25 minutes. It sounds like you guys had really cool stuff being delivered. Anyway, so that's awesome. I actually got to have lunch with my wife. She's working. She's doing her, she's doing interviews for another client. We do a lot of research. Anyway, so welcome back, everybody. Wow. What great work. I just really, I'm so impressed with this group, and I love that everybody, you know, for the most part, everybody really feels comfortable sharing and you know, kind of chiming in, and that's the ecology that that we want to have. I felt, in fact, I'm going to do it one more time, but I felt it was really important that before lunch and even to go, you know, seven minutes into lunch to make sure that everybody had a chance to to share. Towards the end, especially, I was doing a lot of coaching and a lot of talking. And I kind of caught myself. I said, I need to hear from my clients, that you guys. And so I'm so thankful that both our electeds and our staff alike shared. We're going to go into a game and have some fun right now. And then right before we go into kind of looking at the the results, which by the way, everybody has received in their inbox. The SWOT report, I'm going to ask you to not look at it right now to really enjoy our game. And I'm going to pull the whole thing up on the screen after our trivia game. And we'll dive into it because it's informative. Remember, SWOT, where we are today, what you just produced, the vision, that's where we're going to be tomorrow. And our last exercise in setting a short set of priority goals, that's about bridging the gap. And I already, I already told you how impressed I was with the vision in terms of how directional it will be. It's such a great tool for goal setting. So before we jump into our trivia game, does, let me get back to my does anybody have anything that they want to share before we go back to work?
I just want to make sure Seth got his lunch. I sent him an email.
I did. Thank you very much. I've actually got it up here behind me. I have not dug into it yet, but I will. So thank you. This is awesome. I thought I was just getting a sandwich, and there's all sorts of goodies in there. So thank you.
Andrew, I did not receive the SWOT analysis, so one of the Tony or Neil or Jeff.
I will, I will forward it to everybody just to make sure you got it.
Well, Katrina, I sent it to everybody, and I'm working with this list. Let me tell you what email I I sent it to.
I didn't get it either.
Who did? Who didn't?
Neil.
Another staff.
Oh, Steph, looks like Steph didn't get it. So thank you.
I just, I just sent it to, I just sent it to everybody. So.
Matthew, did you get it?
Check your sendio, everybody. I didn't get it either, and I checked into there.
I wonder if it's stuck in the outbox.
It may be stuck in our email system.
Yeah. No, it went out. It actually went out.
Hang on. Andrew, Andrew, hang on. I got it, and I just forwarded it to both mayor, council, and to staff. So you all should have it from me right now.
Great. Great. I actually clicked the verification for everybody. So anyway, I'm glad that I'm glad that you're all going to have it. I don't want you to pay attention to it now, but when we get into the goal setting, that's when you're going to want to reference it because that's going to be a key driver. So great. Any other comments before we jump in? Okay. Let's let's consult. Oh, this is just so slow. Drives me nuts. Let's consult our PowerPoint. So this is a trivia game we're going to play. I'm going to ask you to all get your smart devices out, your phones or whatever you're going to use. Actually, I believe Tony emailed everybody yesterday to remind them to have their smart devices handy. Cell phone is probably the best, but it works with tablets, etc. And so as you're getting those all out, I'm going to ask that you all go to this website. Kahoot.it. That's K H O, excuse me, K A H O O T dot I T. So I'm going to pull up. I've already got it going here. I'm going to go ahead and open it up. So essentially, it's going to take you to an app. And as soon as you get into the app, you're going to enter this PIN number. Eight, two, one, one, one. Oh, there's Katrina already. People are coming in. Oh, people are coming in. So after you enter that in, put in your name or your initials. Oh, I'm just, you guys are flying. This is great. I'm going to wait till I see everybody get in before we start the game.
Tony and I, we're not playing, right, Tony? Or do we just guess everything wrong because we know, we know the answer?
I'm putting myself in, but I'm not going to.
Okay, I'll put myself in, but I won't play.
Well, I want you to be able to see it. Do nicknames. So I'm triple S. That's just my initials are SSS. So just sorry, I went with nickname.
Okay, I'm not in.
I need the PIN again, please, Andrew.
The PIN is on my screen. Look at your computer. If you look at your computer, not, so, hey, everybody, hold on just a minute. The PIN is not on your cell phone. The PIN is on the computer that you're watching me through. I'm sharing my screen. Does everybody see that? If you look at at my screen, the PIN is eight, two, one, 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 eight, nine. Oh, there's more people. I've got 18 people in. So is one person having, I think it's 19 of us. Is there one person that's having a hard time getting in?
I think the mayor said she wasn't playing.
She's in.
No, I'm in there as Eminem.
Yeah, she's just not going to, she knows all, she and Tony made.
I'm just not going to play.
I programmed it. Well, you'll have to play. You'll both have to play, or you won't be able to advance to, well, actually, no, you'll advance automatically.
We'll play, but we'll guess the wrong answers.
Mary, you're not in.
I I'm in.
M D B.
Oh, I saw Mary come in. So I'm going to ask the question. I'm just going to ask, is anybody not in? Okay, we lost somebody. We started off with 19 people this morning, and we're at 18. Well, anyway. So we're going to go ahead and start. Do you hear the little noise? Isn't that fun?
I don't hear any noise.
You don't hear the noise?
No.
Turn on the speaker on your phone. Oh, you got to turn the volume up on your phone.
Volume's up. I don't hear any noise.
I'm going to go ahead and start the game. It's just a little fun song.
We're in.
Okay, everybody's in.
I'm ready, okay.
Okay, here we go. We're going to start. So Gig Harbor 2022 Retreat, three, two, one. Here's the quiz. In what Washington city can you find this landmark? So on your phone, you're going to have those four colors. You click on your phone, the color that represents the name of the city that you think is it.
Hey.
And by the way, it's timed. You only get 20 seconds.
Doesn't matter who goes first, like, do we get?
No, no, you're playing. You know, you just go. You're playing by yourself.
Okay.
You're playing against each other. But by the way, you only have 20 seconds, so that clock tick down tells you you need to answer kind of quickly. Let's take a look. Show media, we already did that. Next, let's see how we're doing. Okay, so um, M M D B.
That's, that's me. And I just have to say, my brother has a farm there that used to be my grandparents'. So we've spent many summers at Egg Day.
So you can see that all the people, the only people that show up are the ones that actually have an answer right. And so you see your point total.
The more points you score.
What's that?
And the faster you answer, the more points you score.
Yeah, the the faster you answer and the more the total, and I always joke and say, whoever gets to 10,000 points, I'm going to buy them a Lexus. And the reason I say that is you can't get to 10,000 points. But great, are you guys ready to do the next one? Remember, 20 seconds. You look at the answer and you match the color on your screen. You touch that color on your phone. You only have 20 seconds. Here we go. What is a group of male lions called? Okay. Everybody but one person actually played, got in that one. Okay, so here is the new thing. Oh, Katrina.
Who, Katrina?
Went up to the top. Well, Mary is in second place, but by, but only by a nose. Jeff is in there and Keith is in there. Hey, we still have another several questions, so you're going to have a chance to get in here. Oh, and by the way, if you hate the game, if you love the game, credit me. If you hate the game, blame Tracy and Tony. That's all I'm saying. Okay, here we go. Next question. Which Washington city is known as the city of subdued excitement? 10 seconds. Okay, 18 again. So somebody is, somebody may have left, but this actually shows you how you voted, right? And let's look at the new scores.
Mary.
The correct answer was Bellingham, by the way. I probably should say the correct answer.
Was that a guess, Mary, or do you know that?
It was a guess because of what I know about Bellingham.
Yeah, if you've ever been to Bellingham, it's not that big of a stretch. So Mary jumped up. By the way, I love Bellingham. I have a lot of friends there. I actually get invited to guest lecture at Western Washington for their, for marketing all the time. I love it. Katrina, you're still up there. Keith? Keith, is there? Lee?
Bringing up the third.
Lee has entered the board. Who is M F K?
Matthew.
Oh, that's our who?
That's our perks manager.
Well, that's, it's Matt. Okay. Okay, here we go. Oh, no wonder Matt wanted to make sure that he had a park where everybody could play. I'm a little slow, but I'll get there. Now you see the arrows. That means those are the people that are actually going up. Katrina actually lost her position. Keith and Lee jumped into let's just, we'll go to the next one now. Okay, here is question number four. Not counting Mayor Markley, which Gig Harbor mayor served the shortest amount of time? Okay, all 18 of you. And you can see how everybody voted. The correct answer, of course, on the screen, on my screen, is George. What was it? Three years and nine months or something? What was the right answer there?
Three years and 10 months, I believe.
In 10 months. Okay.
I had to go with Hubert because I like his name.
Does that, does that mean there's a little bit of nepotism going on there? Okay, let's go to question five. By the way, there is fabulous cash and prizes for the winners. Okay, I lied. There's no cash, but there is prizes, right, Mayor?
Yes, there are.
Okay, well, we'll talk about this. You will see at the end who our Olympic champions are. Oh, Keith made a big move. Lee also made a move. And Roger and Brenda, I'm assuming that Brandon is Brenda, they both have hit the board. So half of our questions are up, and you can see that nobody's going to hit 10,000. I actually, when I did this once, where actually somebody thought I was serious. They were trying so hard, and I said, I'm sorry, I gave you a number that's impossible to hit. Okay, question number six. Oh, no, this is number five. Excuse me. In which Washington coastal town will you find this famous gift shop? Who? 10 seconds. Okay. So the correct answer is Ocean Shores, and the the answer that got the dominant votes was Long Beach. This is fun. Okay, let's see what our new leaderboard looks like here.
Keith got it again.
He's got it again.
Well, but Keith is still number one, but he did not go up in position. He did get more notes or get more points. But Jeff and Katrina are advancing. See those upward arrows?
All right, he's using Google.
Why we only allow 20 seconds?
I do a lot of road trips.
Also, we live in Washington's destination maritime city. We don't go to Long Beach.
That's hilarious. Why would you want to? Long Beach is cold and gray and rainy and okay, here is question number six. In what year did the council pass a resolution to adopt Under a Gig Harbor Moon as the official city song? Okay. Everybody's in. I'm just going to skip. Okay, here we go. The correct answer is 2015. Most of us thought it was 2009. Interesting. Let's look at our new leaderboard. Oh, so everybody held the same position except Josh entered the leaderboard. I'm sorry, they only show the top five. I don't know why they do that, but.
Not so you don't embarrass the people that are down near the bottom.
Yes, I'm glad they don't show those numbers.
You know what, Tony, I'm sure you're right. Anyway, this is great. Okay, here's question number seven. In which which country was the Caesar salad invented? Since I know there's just 18 of us, there's no intention making you wait. The correct answer is Mexico, which seems kind of strange. You would think that it would be in Italy. But we had five people with the right answer. Of course, that means that 13 people had the wrong answer. Here's the new leaderboard.
Yes.
He hasn't gotten one right.
And Jenny's on the board.
Jenny's on the board. Still in first place. Leo, Robin hit the leaderboard. You go.
Jumped way up.
And Jenny jumped in. Jenny was saying before, I'm glad we're not seeing those lower scores. Anyway, Stacy is the highest climber. She is up four. Uh, anyway, Stacy um, is the highest climber. She is up four positions. Now, she isn't on the leaderboard yet, but I just want to give her some props. She had, she really accelerated, so way to go, Stacy. Okay. I mean, is this fun? Is this ridiculous?
It's fun.
It's just silly fun. Okay, here we go. Question number eight of nine. Uh, other than water, what is the most consumed beverage? And we believe that this is worldwide.
Oh, I bet I got that wrong.
Oh, you're all in already, so I'm skipping to save time. Um, the correct answer is tea, and only uh, so 15 wrong, three right. Let's see, uh, let's see who moved up the leaderboard. Oh. Lee, you stud. Well, he went from being off the board altogether in the first couple of questions, and he has just been uh, climbing like a rocket. Okay. So, um, we are going to our last question, and um, uh, this is just a silly question. This is a question that um, Tracy and even Tony don't know. But actually, I already gave you the answer. It's a true false question. Does today's facilitator have dyslexia? True or false? You guys have all done it? Okay. Number one is Jeff. No, he's third place, I'm sorry. He got four out of nine. Number two is Robin, and number one, five out of nine. Da 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 da. Lee.
Lee, gold medal.
Are you not able to hear the sound? Did you turn your phones up?
Can't hear any sound. I don't hear any sound. We make our own sound.
So uh, I'm gonna turn it over to our mayor. Uh, I said there were casts and prizes. I was half right. There are prizes.
Um. There are prizes. I wa, so I wanted to do some really cool like prize boxes and gift baskets and all that stuff, but COVID. So we're doing gift cards that will be mailed to your homes. Um, Lee has won Galaxy Theater gift card to go see a movie with his sweetheart and, or whoever. And Robin has won a gift certificate to the Tides Tavern for apps or whatever. And Jeff has won a Cutter's Point gift card. So those will be arriving at your homes later this week. And thank you to Laura for going around town and grabbing all of the gift cards. I so appreciate your help with the lunches and the gift cards.
Anytime. I'm just a poor me on DoorDash, really. It was lovely to see all of your houses, and uh, Fred, you have the steepest driveway I've ever seen in my life. I was terrified, terrified backing up.
Yeah, it's kind of scary.
It was fun, though.
Funny.
Well, congratulations, trivia winners.
I gotta ask you, how come you didn't come to my house?
Well, we, we agreed that that was, that was too lengthy of a drive, and so you could, you could DoorDash a solution.
Well, and that's what I was offered, and I declined. Um, but I, I am teasing you, because it'd probably be during traffic over a three-hour round trip. I live up in my uh, Mill Creek, by the way, which is in between Seattle and Everett, a little bit closer to the Everett side. That's Snohomish County. My wife and I raised our kids in Linwood. And uh, we are happily, we, we raised our kids, our two kids. Um, they are 37 and 39. Um, both doing great, uh, just awesome. Uh, they're, they have just great lives and uh, great families and uh, both of our kids and their families are always over at our house. We get together a couple times a month. You know, for dinners and stuff, and because they, they both live in Snohomish County. And we're having a Christmas party at our house that Sandra and I are hosting on February 5th. That's because yours truly was uh, quarantined and in bed. Turns out I did not have COVID, but our son did have COVID. So um, we put things off, and we're having, you know, the old joke, it's a retail sale, Christmas in July, I think it was Sleep Country USA. You know, 25 years ago, they did that. So we're having Christmas in February. Anyway, the whole point of that is, is that we read, the four of us, we raised our kids in a little 1,050 foot uh, square foot Rambler. Three bedrooms and one bath, and the one bath didn't get uh, real until they were in junior high school. And then I was about ready to put a fork through my head. Anyway, it was, so the joke is that we are happily spending our kids' inheritance. Built a 3,300 square foot home in Mill Creek. So anyway, the kids love it, and it's, it's, it's a lot of fun, but what the heck? Okay, so I, I'm gonna come up for air, and before we move into our SWAT review. And again, you don't have to open the document, because I'm gonna put it on the screen. I wanted to open it up again, just for anybody to share any comments. Um, there, there's no, no holds barred. I mean, just, if, does anybody have anything they want to share? And it's fine if you don't, but um, when I hear myself talk too much, I wanna come up for air and give my clients an opportunity to share. And, and you guys aren't wallflowers. You, you jump in, but just thought I would check. Okay, so.
Well, I, I actually have one comment, and I want to say kudos to Katrina for listening to me as I was talking about my adventures in Africa. Which she's the only one that got the uh, what's the name of a group of male lions question, right?
That was directly correlated to our conversations, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people thought it was a pride, but the, the disclaimer is it's male lions, and so isn't that a coalition?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't play. Of course, I know all of the winner, that the right answers, because I programmed it in my Kahoot app. But I'm glad you guys played. It was fun.
I just thought it was a threat, just a large group of male lions. Like, that's run.
Yeah.
We're not.
No, that, that is definitely a part of the deal. So let's go ahead, and I'm gonna leave that. Uh, we're gonna move into our SWAT um, analysis. And I'm gonna give it a chance. It's a hot link. And then boom. Of course, um, we go at a glacier's pace. Okay, so just really quickly, these are the results. Um, we had 17 out of the 19 of you actually participate in the SWAT. Um. Both elected officials and department directors participated, N in statistics equals sample size. So 17 out of 19 of you played the game here. Um, so this is a present day SWAT analysis. However, you may remember when we got to the external conditions, which are opportunities and threats. They were present, and we are also looking two years out. Um, because opportunities and threats are, you know, don't have to be realized today. They could be potentially realized within the time horizon of our planning process, which is our two years. Uh, so essentially, um, what I did is I took all of your inputs. And I aggregated them and I tabulated them to surface the common themes, and I'm only reporting on the dominant themes. I always counsel my clients that we need to separate signal from noise. Forget about the noise, focus on the signal, because that's what's gonna help you in strategic planning. Note, only the themes that have 5% or more responses in each of the categories are, are presented. So in other words, if there was a category that tabulated, you know, like maybe two people said basically the same thing. Um, that they're not presented. However, I did keep the entire database, and when I submit my report um, to the mayor and Tony, uh, I will include that database, so you can see 100% of everybody's responses. So.
Andrew?
Yes.
Um, if N equals 17, how did we get to 19 in the first strength?
Because everybody uh, got three options. Remember when I interviewed you? Uh, you got to do three strengths, three weaknesses, three, et cetera. Everybody got to weigh in on uh, three of each of the four categories.
Right, but if you only interviewed 17 people, I don't see how 19 people said that.
No, let, let me, let me rephrase that. So there were 19 people total, if you add all eight electives and all um, all 11 directors. That's a total population of 19. 17 participated. But 17 people had three options at four categories, which totals 51. Is that understood?
Okay.
Where am I losing you?
What does the number 19 represent there?
Yeah.
That's the number, I, I wasn't there. I, I haven't gotten to that part yet. So I'll, I'll continue sharing this. I wanted to make sure that you understood here. So each one of these are listed in order. It shows the percentage of the times that it was listed against the sample. Not, uh, the sample size for each category is different, because not everybody used all three chances to, to chime in. 19 is the number of votes. If you take 19 divided into 47, you have 40.4%. So that means the number one strength by far was an amazing skilled and talented staff. That means that um, of um, of the 47 inputs, um, uh, it represented 40%. So that's a very, very big dominant theme. So I will see, now have, am I, has everybody caught up, or am I not explaining this well? Well, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm guessing everybody's.
Make a comment. I think, I'm gonna make a comment. I think the confusion is you interviewed 17 people, but there are 19 comments that uh, are saying an amazing skilled and talented staff, so that means that a couple of people made a comment that basically said the same thing twice.
No, that is not what it means. What it means is, no, 19 people said the same thing is what it means.
You only interviewed 17.
But you only interviewed 17.
Hey guys, slow down. Everybody got three choices. 17 times three strengths is 51 strengths. So if everybody said the exact same thing in all three levels, that would be 51.
So if I said that I wanted an amazing skilled and talented staff as two of my three strengths, is that how we got to 19?
Oh, I see what you're, what you're saying. Um, so uh, maybe some people, so let me be clear about something. I only interviewed uh, the electives. The 11 uh, department heads, they actually did things online. We did that to save money. Okay, so if I take a look at, and you guys will see this, if you take a look at the actual uh, final data. Well, Zoom isn't letting me open this. So um, here is the survey results. And we're not gonna tabulate. Again, you're gonna get it sent to you, but see, these are all the strengths, weaknesses, et cetera. So yes, um, somebody may have used uh, uh, talked about the staff more than once. Again, with an online instrument, I can't control that, but now I'm caught up on, on why people are, are confused.
Okay, now I understand, too.
Yeah, well, I, I see where I was confusing people, and um, I do, I do apologize. Um, anyway, so yeah, I, I could only control the 11 electives, and I can tell you that not all 11 electives filled in all three of their openings, and I can guarantee you, they were all different, because I wouldn't let them duplicate. Now, um, so we've done this, we can see six uh, equals 13% essentially, but this is something different. So essentially, is I took all of these together to do the total percent. That means that these four responses equal 83% of all of the data communicated. That means 17% of the responses were too small to be tabulated. Is that, does that make sense? Am I confusing anybody? Maybe that's the better way to do it. So this is adding all this up, and the reason that that's important statistically is the higher this number, that means the more unified the entire group was. The lower the number, that means the responses um, were dispersed, and that they were very different. So this is a very high number. If you get below 50%, that means that there was a lot, there wasn't much agreement on what they are, but again, uh, majority rules. So number one, at 40.4%, amazing staff. Number two, we're in a strong financial position. That's 17% of uh, the total responses were uh, out of the 47. Third, uh, strong citizen volunteer engagement. Uh, they were talking about commissions. Uh, also at 13%. And then finally, um, you all talked about, hey, we're really excited about, we've got a new collaborative council and mayor. And that was also six uh, times it was mentioned out of 47 total, uh, at 13%. And when your number is this high, that means you tabulate all these together, then that is 83% of the total responses. And so you guys are all thinking pretty much the same way. So let's take a look at weaknesses. You can see it's 61%, so it's still pretty unified. You can see they're spread out over a lot more. Um, but not, not too shabby. Number one, at 11%, um, poor staff morale. People are concerned about that. And by the way, this wasn't just the staff chiming in. Um, electives also contributed to this. They were talking about, you know, somewhat of a toxic culture in the past. They, they were talking about difficulty in retention and the fact that uh, our, our staff, uh, many are overworked. And so that's what this category is, and so that's the biggest concern. See, uh, one thing I want to share with you is that catalog in the four um, categories of SWAT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats is merely a process. It's not actually the product, it's just a process. We use this data to inform uh, developing our priority goals, right? The idea is that the strengths and opportunities are assets. The weakness and, and threats are liabilities, and so we want to capitalize and leverage our strengths and opportunities in terms of looking at goals, and we want to assure up and defend against our weaknesses and threats. So that's why I emailed this to you, and thank you, Tony. I'm, I'm not sure why I got blocked. I hit the little button that made me verified or whatever your process is. By the way, it's really smart. But um, anyway, so number two, uh, tied at first place, 11%. Um, look at that. Not capitalized. Uh, too many staff vacancies. Um, and the, the challenge that we're not trying to, or that we're not attracting applicants to fill vacancies. You can see there's a little heartburn over that. Also at 11%, and I brought this up. Uh, the shifting priorities, reactive versus proactive. And again, it was due to lack of vision. And um, several of you were talking about that, um, when we were chatting about our vision. And, and I know that the mayor chimed in on that. So this is a big deal, right? Well, you have solved the vision problem. When it comes to being proactive and not shifting priorities, um, when, by the time we get through the end of the day, you're gonna have um, your sights clearly aimed on your top five strategic go, on your top five priority goals. And remember, you, you, some people think we're gonna limit ourselves to five goals in two years. But goals are supported by projects. Projects are supported by tasks. And so literally, i- if, if uh, each five goals only had five projects each, and usually they have a lot more. And then each of those five projects only have five tasks. Most projects have tasks in the hundreds, but you'd already be uh, working on 125 initiatives. That's just five, five, and five. The fact is, when the, the staff is working on this, they'll be dealing with hundreds of tasks. If you do not set a constraint, that's what happens, and you get overworked and overwhelmed, and you end up with uh, too many competing priorities. Number four, uh, working on too many projects at the same time. So what we're going through today will keep the staff from being overwhelmed, and will keep you from doing too many things at the same time. And it will keep you from shifting priorities, because you are identifying the priorities for the next two years. Priority goals. Goals are those giant beehags, and then each goal is supported by a ton of work. Right? And we'll explain how all of that will come to fruition when we do our next steps, when we wrap up. Um, okay, so um, we did this one, not addressing climate change, three votes, 6.5%. Lack of department communication. Lack of department communications, they were, what they were talking about, the three votes is that some departments weren't communicating either to each other or to elected officials. And I'm not going to say that specific departments were called out. This is not the place to talk about specific departments. I will send the raw data to the mayor and Tony. But I certainly am not going to throw anybody under the bus. You're my clients. You protect and you take care of and you support your clients. Sixty-one percent. So you can see there was a lot more dispersion there.
I'd like to know if the mayor and Tony are going to share those results with council that you sent to them.
That's our plan, right, Tony? I wouldn't think we would not share that with council, absolutely not.
If there's a specific issue that needs to be resolved, we'll resolve it, but we're not going to hide it from anybody. So we'll let you see exactly what all the raw data is.
Why don't we just have Andrew send it to you and mayor and council then?
I'll tell you what, Lee, I appreciate what you're saying. We've already defined the process. Again, I'm not going to reverse engineer. I'm going to send it to who I was agreed to send it to and then they can forward it to you. It's not my place to go against what I agreed to do. So I appreciate what you're saying, Lee, but I do have marching orders and you just heard from your mayor and your council that they'll share it with everybody.
You'll get it exactly as we get it.
There you go. Glad that Lee brought that up to clear that up. So opportunities. You can see that the sample size is lower and the reason is, is because opportunities are more difficult to come up with. And so there weren't as many contributions. Number one, by a good chunk, was federal and state funds being available for improving infrastructure. Right? And I mean, you know, you were talking, they were talking about the culverts, they were talking about parks, they were talking about the waterfront alliance. They were talking about highway sixteen. And so all of the, and by the way, everything I just said is in that raw data report. So you will see that. Having the fact that, you know, given the fact that I tabulated, the information is fresh. Twenty-seven percent. Essentially, ten votes. No, something doesn't seem right. Ten divided by thirty-seven? No, it's twenty-seven. It didn't look right. Remember, in fact, my dyslexia is so bad, I'm not dyslexic, I'm Lex Dixon. And so sometimes my math isn't perfect. I had to check myself. So number two, newly elected leadership. It's an opportunity to build and rebuild trust. Eleven percent. Came up four times out of the thirty-seven inputs. Third place, iconic and beautiful waterfront. Opportunity for tourism. Well, you you pretty much covered all of that in your vision statement. I mean, who wouldn't want to go to a leader in terms of livability? Or, you know, that we're just really good environmental stewards or, you know, that we're stellar in economic development. Anyway, you can see that this number was much lower, we're at forty-six percent. So people were far more spread out here. That's why there's so few numbers that surfaced as over five percent. And there's a reason that we do that five percent. There's actually statistical best practices behind that. Not going to waste your time if you want to understand what those best practices are. You have my email address. You certainly can email me. I'd be happy to share. Threats. We had more threat inputs than we did opportunity. Sample size of forty-three. And you can see that it was even more dispersed. So the point is, the bulk of the inputs were only mentioned once. That's all it means. So at ten inputs, twenty-three point three percent was federal and state legislation, regulations, mandates, et cetera, means loss of local control. That showed up ten times out of all of our inputs. In second place, at seven percent, growth and development impacting infrastructure. The key concern was that it was stressing the infrastructure. I mean, look at the traffic burden on highway sixteen. Covid, well, that's pretty, pretty obvious and we hope that'll get better and better and better. Earlier this week, the UK announced that there is Omicron B. We have Omicron one point O and now there's Omicron two point O. It's already in Great Britain, which means it'll be in the United States in probably a week or two. It's not real virulent though. So that's a good news. Anyway, we're not over this yet. And then climate change. There were three inputs that looked at climate change as a threat. And that is covered in your in your vision. So that's really cool. So before I move on, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I actually have a question.
Okay.
So I'm all ears. One of the things that I do find valuable would be when I've done an exercise like this is even if there's when you do it together, it kind of helped, everyone can start building on what they're hearing. So there's a whole bunch of those, particularly the opportunities and threats, where there was only one or two items that were listed. That may be one of those things where if we had a time to look at that list and say, boy, only one person said this, but now that I think about it, yeah, that is a heck of an opportunity. We need to talk about that more. So I'm glad you're going to send the raw data to us so we can take a look at that. Because that will, that might generate a little bit more discussion and maybe we add on a priority or something after the fact you're at one of our study sessions. You're on mute then, Andrew.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. And yes, you are going to get the raw data. That was always part of the plan. And this is a silly little sidebar. At the beginning of Covid, when we're all doing Zoom, everybody, like I've done it three times already, they start talking without unmuting themselves. And I had one client that everybody agreed, including me, that every time that they started talking without unmuting, they had to put twenty bucks in the jar. And the idea is that after a year, they had a ton of money. And they threw this incredible party and it was great. And of course, everybody went to the party. They all came home with Covid. It was a really sad story. I think it was in the New York Times. Just kidding. Anyway, the point is that so yeah, absolutely, you're going to have that. But I will restate that it's really important to understand that the legislative body of any jurisdiction, you know, they have to make trade-offs. And if you consume all the noise and you don't look at the signal, you know, what, what was the most dominant themes, then that's kind of analogous to reverse engineering the process. Completely respect what Tony said. There may be, you know, most of the other things that was brought up once, that's the far more. Only one person brought it up once and there were a couple in there that were twos. So I don't know if that's going to change or add to the priorities or not, but you'll certainly make that decision. You'll have an opportunity to do so.
And this is Seth, I just had a comment with the SWOT analysis and I, you know, I think there's some really good reasons for doing this as a, you know, a fresh start, clean slate and bringing it together. I do find these very helpful, you know, with organizations when you do reflect on them. And I know we'll have changes in positions, you know, even next year, the year after that. But it does give some good guidance as far as like, you know, tracking if we had KPIs to these things and what has moved from say, an opportunity to know a strength. So it can be a really great way of showing the progress that we're making. So I do like the idea of looking at the old, understand why we need the new, but my thoughts.
Excellent, excellent. Any other comments before we move into literally our last exercise of the day? Again, it's the longest exercise. In fact, it's so long that we'll take a break in the middle, but I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to chime in. Okay, you know that you can chime in whenever the spirit leads you. Okay, here we go. So now let me save that, take that down and let's move into priming this next exercise. And we're a couple of minutes ahead of schedule. Awesome. So define goals. Again, our time horizon is two years, twenty twenty-two, starting today in twenty twenty-three. Qualities of a well-crafted objectives are smart, essentially. And, you know, Seth just talked about KPIs. Well, you can only have KPIs if you understand what metrics you want to measure. And if you establish targets that you want to hit. And that's what the purpose of KPIs are and that's analogous to SMART goals. So right on. So the SMART acronym, I'm sure most of you know, there's about three or four different versions. This is Andrew's version, not the only version, but the one that I live with specific. In other words, the, and goal statements are really short. All right, we're not writing a book. It's not an action plan. It's a very, very high level goal that is designed to be in support of moving the ball forward and living and realizing our vision. Next is measurable. Back to what Seth was talking about, quantifiable with a target. You know, by the end of twenty twenty-three, we want to be at this level. Assigned to a department or a committee. And so there's three Ws in project management, right? Who does what by when? If you lose even one of those three, it all falls apart. If there's no assignment, then everybody can point their fingers. Well, I thought you were going to do it. Assignments are important. Realistic. And we'll make sure that it's attainable and that we're not setting ourselves up with something that's, you know, an unrealistic target. We don't want to set ourselves up for failure. It's okay to have stretch goals. In fact, when I've been the CEO of three companies and in every company, I had a specific performance management approach that I used. And when we were setting, so the only people that reported to me were, you know, the SVPs or department heads or whatever. And I've got a short set and I would always, we'd always work together and negotiate what their performance objectives at the beginning of the year would be. And of course you hit those and it has an impact on your merit increase. I would always set the goal, but then I'd always set a stretch goal. And if they hit that, then their raise was significantly higher. And so it's motivational. It's a good cultural thing to get people really thinking big. And of course, the last one is, it's got to be time bound. Well, you've already done that. Your due dates. And by the way, some of these due dates may be earlier, but your latest due date will be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And so this is what the exercise looks like. And essentially, it's, you know, on your on your agenda and it's going to be the exact same four-step process. We're going to deploy it a little bit differently. But again, we're going to brainstorm. We're not brainstorming headlines, but short goal bullets. In other words, you don't vet out, you don't wordsmith a whole bunch of stuff when you're brainstorming because you could be wasting time wordsmithing something that does not surface based on votes. But we're going to brainstorm, we're going to consolidate, which is the second thing. Again, you know, grouping. We're going to, we're going to group or delete duplicates, just to be clear. And then we're going to prioritize the consolidated list by voting. It should say, that's my error, it should say they're voting on your goal bullet. Pardon me. I do about thirty to thirty-five of these a year and sometimes I miss something. Frame the top five bullets into goal statements. And I explained the rationale by doing a short set of bullets. Those five goals, which are really, really big, are going to have, you know, probably dozens and dozens of projects in support of each of them. And then those projects are going to be tactically assigned to staff. And so there's going to be hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of tasks. So it's exponential. You add one more priority. And if you decide to add a sixth, that's your prerogative. You guys are the boss. But just remember, when you add one goal, you essentially add one hundred more tasks to your staff. You have, it's like a Christmas tree. It's small at the top, then it really branches out at the bottom. And I just wanted you to be aware that the math is exponential. It's not linear. Okay? Okay, so any questions about what it is we're doing and how we're going to do it? You guys have been through this process and you did an outstanding job. So hearing no comments, I'm going to go ahead and pull up our priority goals sheet. If this thing will let me do it. I don't know if you guys experience this, but there it is, priority goals. I have them all up and ready to go. So essentially, we're going to brainstorm and I'll do the same thing. We'll add, you know, up to twenty if we have to. Again, we don't want to just go forever because the best ideas usually come up first. And so we'll do this, we'll consolidate the list just by eliminating the duplicates or grouping them or whatever. And after we've done that, everybody gets to vote. Everybody gets three votes. You got a first place, a second place and a third place vote. So instead of everybody getting one vote to choose their favorite goal, everybody gets to choose three. And so the aggregate will be, you know, whatever nineteen times three is. There'll be a lot of votes. And then we'll take those top five. And if somebody says, oh, we got to add that sixth. You know, that, you guys run the show. Based on the time available, we might not get to framing all of them. And so you might have to finish framing them in the study session, but I'm committed to getting you out of here on time. So same process. In fact, let's do this. Let me just start off now because I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to get a goal bullet up there.
So Andrew, while you're doing that, when we put goals up, are you, do we need to have them in the SMART format?
No, when we're doing, thank you. Really, really good point, Mary. No, when we're brainstorming, we're not wordsmithing, we're not doing anything. They don't need to be smart. It's just boom, you know, let's do this. Let's achieve that. Yeah. Very, very good point. Thank you so much. You know, whenever I get a question, I realize I didn't explain a process fully. I know for a fact that if one person has a question, you know, several more people in the group have the same question. So thank you for that.
So I'm going to add to that, that once we have the the priority set and we have five or six items, staff will take a stab at putting together what that work plan looks like. And we will keep in mind that we need to make everything follow that SMART acronym.
Yeah, and the goals need to be smart. The tactics need to be smart, but the middle level, like strategies, which we're not dealing with, you know, these priority goals are your strategic direction. And you'll see when we do the wrap-up, how you will be informed of those work plans. You're going to have your fingerprints there. So it's a really good process. Anyway, so I've got up to twenty available. And again, really, really short. You know, think about the headlines, but we're just going to call them goal bullets. So we'll make sure that everybody who wants to gets an opportunity to share a goal bullet. And don't forget about the letterbox. And then once we run out, then we'll allow those that have already contributed, contributed to add another one. So who wants to start us off?
I'd like to start.
Okay.
I don't know if it's the right wording. Help me with it, but.
Don't worry about it. We're just brainstorming.
Work on climate action plan.
Okay, well, thank you for giving us a lesson on how to do this right. That was perfect. It's concise, it's completely clear and it's very directional. So excellent start. Who's next?
Oh, I'd be happy to go next.
Go ahead, Jenny.
And that would be to set up a climate sustainable action committee by March thirtieth.
So we're not going to get into dates on brainstorming. There's no sense putting the extra work into something if it doesn't bubble up.
Okay.
To develop a, I'm sorry, a what now?
Climate Sustainable Action Committee.
Right. And if those two came together as a single, that this number two may be an action item under the larger goal of the plan. So the point is, and this is why we don't throw anything away, the things that do not bubble up to being in the top The things that do not bubble up to being in the top short set, they don't go away, they end up rolling up under as tactics or projects. So all of these inputs are going to be very, very valuable. So thank you Jenny, who's next?
I'll do one. I'd like to decrease the distance residents have to go to a park or open space.
Great, okay, I'm, I'm going to, as things form, I'm going to just continue to do some coaching. Remember, we're dealing with BHAGs. We're not dealing with small projects or tactics. We're dealing with huge overarching things based on your SWOT and based on the vision. You know what? One thing, and I apologize, I didn't leave a place for the vision. So please forgive me for making that mistake. Hey, bear with me, it's always nice to have that vision statement since it's our North Star. There it is. We really want that vision statement in front of our face. Okay, excellent, alrighty. So BHAGs, remember, big, big hairy audacious goals, who's next?
All right, I have one, this is Seth. You know, I would think that this might, just to give it some preface here. This, this goal, I think is something, an obvious one that we have to address, but it might come in a, you know, I don't know where it's going to fit along the priorities, but I would think it would be pretty high. But it's addressing our, our staffing, our staff issues, whether it's morale, cultural, and then also, you know, filling out the positions that we have. We might have a lot of goals or projects, but until we can get a good grasp on that, it's going to be hard to accomplish these other items.
Great, okay, who's next? We want to keep a healthy pace. And by the way, we are going to have an opportunity, just like we did with the vision, to discuss these and, you know, vet them out. But right now it's just straight traditional brainstorming, just get it up there and move, move, move. So who is next?
I'll go next. Seth, I was kind of on that same thought. And I just worded it a little differently in providing that the city provides efficient and effective municipal services. You know, that we would address our staffing issues, you know, honor the staff, communicate well, you know, have a healthy work environment so that we're able to do that. Kind of the same thing though, little bit.
Pardon me, I ended up in the wrong space. Okay, great, who's next?
I've got, I would like to see us maintain the small town feel while still growing responsibly.
Thanks for putting up my ugliness. Okay, who's next?
This is Robin, I would like to increase the vitality of the downtown business district.
Do you see how a lot of these are lining up right under your vision? That's brilliant and that's the goal. Okay, and again, we're sticking with new people, everybody getting an opportunity to chime in, who would like to? Who is next?
I can take a stab at it, more, more sidewalks.
Awesome. And if that bubbled up to the top, we would frame it, you know, talking about, you know, what, what that looks like so that it's a specific. But that's a perfect brainstorm, excellent, who's next?
I want to put, talk briefly just about the fact that we can, we do a good job at many things and this is one in particular, but I constantly hear that we still need to do more. Because people don't get the word on public projects. And so my statement is fill gaps in public input and outreach on capital projects.
Excellent.
Jeff, mine was going to be something very similar to yours. Maybe establish a public participation framework or policy for the city.
Say that again, a public participation what?
Framework or policy.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You guys took mine, mine was just increased communication between the city and our citizens.
Okay. Anything else before I allow people to start adding more than one?
Yeah, I'll jump in with one, it's kind of a larger picture than just the downtown business district. I would say develop a plan to increase the support the city provides to our business community.
Excellent, excellent.
Mine is along the same lines, I'd like to see us attract employers of a, of a larger nature, maybe manufacturers or something like that to fill our industrial zoned areas.
I like that one Lee.
Okay, somebody new?
Come up with a diversity, equity and inclusion program to attract a larger pool of candidates.
Whoops, I'm sorry, I didn't even see that I hit that. Excellent, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll open it up to those who have already contributed to, if you've got a second one, go ahead and share it. And we'll go from there. And again, 20 is a maximum, not a minimum.
Okay, I'd like to share another one if possible. Actually two, they're separate, but we'll try one.
Well, let's, let's just do one.
Okay, got it.
Let's do one and let's let other people to, to get a second one.
Got it, thanks. Work on urban forest management plan. Urban forest management plan.
Again, another one that falls right under supporting our vision, which is.
I'd like to reduce traffic congestion.
Can you show us the top again, Andrew?
Yeah, you bet, I tell you what, why don't I do this? I'm going to make it a little bit smaller. Are you able to see it that small? Okay, good. I, I don't know what, what you guys are seeing when I do this. It's really easy for me because I'm right in front of it. And I'm sorry, you guys are having to look at my head here, but I've got to get close. So the best practice in Zoom is to have your head in the top third of the frame and not to be too close. And when I'm typing, I'm like this and it's very scary, I should turn my camera off. I know, isn't that, nobody should have to deal with that. Anyway, great question, Mary.
I have another one. So mine kind of, I think somewhat relates to Robin's, but I was just thinking on the federal and state funds for infrastructure. You know, I know we have a strategy on that, but is there something that we can do more? So develop a strategy for federal and state infrastructure.
What, what am I typing?
I don't know.
But you know what, it maybe, maybe I wasn't typing at all, it didn't accept it. It's a, an artifact, a Zoom artifact. Could you please state that again?
Develop. Yeah, develop a strategy for federal and state infrastructure.
Thank you.
This is Matthew and I beg every your patience, I need help with this, but it's about understanding service needs, understanding community. Understanding the community needs, I guess it's my point.
Be talking about service expectations?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, we've got room for two more.
So this is Jenny and I have one.
One in here yet, do you Jenny?
Oh no, I do have one up at the top. Develop a citizen complaint form.
Okay, before someone who has already shared something chimes in, is there anybody? We've got one space left, is there anybody that hasn't have, have anything on the board that would like to share?
I don't have anything on the board.
Lee, let's, let's hear from you sir.
I'd like to develop a strategy to maintain and enhance our commercial fishing fleet.
Not going to be able to get all that in. Okay, good enough. So let me just do a little quick spell check to get rid of some of this ugliness. And then okay, well, I just have to go fix that on my own.
Andrew, since Jeff and Tracy's were similar to mine, can I change mine? If you're only going to 20?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely you can, let, let me finish. Let me finish trying to clean up some of this ugly. Okay, decrease, that's supposed to say decrease, right?
That was distant, decreased distance.
Right, it's the decrease word that I, I'm trying to.
No, it's the distance word.
Oh, thank you. Whoops, I blew it.
If I can speak while you're typing, Andrew.
Well, of course.
Item number one is, it's spelled correctly, but the word is not client, it's climate.
Thank you. That's a pretty, pretty big difference.
Thank you, Lee.
There's a couple of it that I, that I've messed up, but yes, going back to who wanted to change what?
Let's see, what number was I?
I don't remember.
Oh, maybe number 10. Something like focus on character retention and historic preservation.
I like that.
I like that.
Character retention and what?
Historic preservation.
Thank you.
Very good.
Who was it that gave that one?
Katrina.
I'd like to make a small change to the one I did, I think it's the one on the urban forest map, okay, number seven, 15 or 17, whatever it is.
Well, I need to know which one it is. Forest is 15.
Number 15, so just add tree retention and replacement. Now, don't, don't take it out, just work on urban forest management.
I tell you what, with all due respect, we are wordsmithing and we haven't voted. So if this thing pops up to the top or a combination thereof, we will get into making it just right, okay? But again, it, trust me, it's not, it doesn't make, it's just not a good use of time to wordsmith something until it bubbles to the top. So, okay, now we're going to move into the, that consolidation process. And rather than going the direction we did before, and I take responsibility for that, what I'm looking for is to delete or combine duplicates. Things that are saying the same thing, rather than going through, you know, kind of an arduous categorization like we did before.
I think one, two and 15 can be combined.
I would agree.
I would agree.
So would I. I would too.
One, two, 15. So you know, gee whiz, that really makes good sense. And I'm hearing everybody kind of agree with that. So the, the process then is we're going to consolidate that down to one. And there's two tactics you can use. One, you choose the one that is the bigger, the more global, comprehensive thing. Because, you know, frankly, some of these things are just small tactics. And they're not going to, they're not going to make, they're not going to surface to the top. We need to be thinking about really, really big things. And so this is why I love this conversation. We're talking about environmental stewardship. So I, I think that we want to, so that's enough information. So we either pick one of these that we think is the most inclusive and it would be an umbrella that the others would fit into.
Andrew, can I make a suggestion here, similar to what we did with our, our previous exercise? Just the, the way that we have the the missions, I'm sorry, the mission, the vision statement, where we have those four different buckets. Maybe we use those four categories to again, group these on the goals.
Well, I tell you what, that's great Seth, but I'd rather not. I'd rather that we, I, I think it would be more expeditious, I mean, if you'll allow me. So first of all, you're a hundred percent right, we've got these four categories. And what Seth is saying is a hundred percent right. Because we need to make sure our goals are aligned to and in support of those four categories. But I think it would be faster and maybe we're actually doing that. So maybe I should stand back Seth. For instance, we just grouped three that fall under environmental stewardship. So let's just group those. Instead of putting everything in one of those four categories, let's not go down that road. Let's take them one at a time as duplicates. So back to my original question, the, the two opportunities. One is to pick one of these three as an overarching category. The other tactic is to write another all inclusive goal bullet. And whichever way you want to do it will be the right way to do it.
I think the work on climate action plan, which should be the overarching category.
I agree.
I agree, two and 15 could be some, some tasks of climate action.
I kind of think a little differently, I think that number two could be over one and 15. One and 15 being the goals of number two.
I was thinking along the same lines, Lee. If you form the committee to work on these things, then the committee would be tasked for those specific items on what the, I think it would start, working on the climate action plan would probably start with a climate action committee. But that was, it's up to you guys, but I, that's the way I was thinking in terms of how the work would get done and who would start the work, it would probably start with that. how the work would get done and who would start the work. It would probably start with that committee.
Sure. You usually come up with a plan first and then you assign the group responsible for getting it done. And of course, it could be a citizen committee connected with a city department. And maybe I don't know if your council, if the council members are divided up in terms of having liaison responsibility to different commissions. I know that that's kind of normal. But I'd like to hear other people chime in because I want to, I want to move forward. So I've got two or three people saying the plan comes first. I've got one person that says the committee comes first. I'd like to hear some other input. Otherwise I'm going to have to do a thumbs up exercise.
I like, I like the idea of saying create, create a climate action plan. And to me, the activities under that are that you're going to have to do a committee, that you're going to have to have a force management plan. So I would think number one goes first.
Okay.
You don't create the plan before the committee, but the ultimate goal is, is the plan.
Gotcha. Yeah, it's actually a bigger, more global thing, isn't it? And if it surfaces to the top and based on everything I'm hearing, it, it very well may, I mean, it surfaced to the, the vision statement. Then we would play around and reword it so that it's smart. So Lee, are you okay to follow your colleagues and allow these to be sub-issues of the plan?
I don't agree, but I can live with it.
Okay. Well, that's great. Lee is teaching us all how to collaborate. Now, see, this is it. We don't lose them. We keep everything. And all of this. Why do I keep wanting to go client, client?
Emma, A P.
I know. I'm sure that's still wrong, but it doesn't matter. Anyway, so excellent. Let me get in here. Nice work, everybody. Great, great conversation, great collaboration. The important thing is that we're not losing any of it. Okay.
I would like to offer another one that I think we can combine when it's time.
I think time is now.
Okay, I would like to take I think it's 12, 13, and 20.
You think that they are basically saying the same thing? That's my
Yeah, because what I'm thinking is that we need to develop a, I think we need to develop a plan that supports our business community and that includes attracting employers of larger developing a strategy to maintain and enhance our commercial fishing industry.
Yeah.
Looking at economic development.
Yeah, that, that really makes good sense.
You could add seven to that too.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. There was another one. Yeah.
Brilliant. Absolutely brilliant. So we're talking about developing an overarching, an overarching goal category here. Brilliant. So first question. I, I think that you covered all four that talked about economic development. So again, we have two options and I'm love to hear from you all. One is to choose one of these like we did in the former process to be, you know, kind of the catchall, the overarching, the one that is the higher strategic, bigger thinking. And then the other would be to rewrite a goal bullet that would be inclusive of those four. And I am all entertained, whatever you guys are thinking.
I think that would be the overarching.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
What was that Brenda?
Oh, I was just going to suggest a brief rewrite that I had just kind of jotted those same things down in supporting a dynamic and robust, robust local economy. Something about, you know, just overall. But that's just an idea.
No, say, please say that again. Develop a
Dynamic and robust local economy.
Okay, so the question is, so we've got three people that chimed in that said, develop a plan to increase support for our business community, which, which is very inclusive. That makes sense. And then there's another version here that's just kind of a rewrite. And I would say, you know, go with the rewrite. If you can't find one of these that's overarching. And, and you know, kind of to the point that we don't want to wordsmith these until we vote on them. I'm going to ask, so I had a lot of people, I put X's, three people said, hey, yeah, this is the big one. And Brenda said, this is a, just a different way of writing it. And frankly, hers is, you know, maybe even a, a, a bigger thought or maybe connects more to the vision. I'm not sure.
So I'm going to add to you chime in. I'd like to add to what Brenda just put in and say, develop a plan to support and enhance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that.
So that means we work with the businesses that are currently here. And we worked to bring more businesses in, which I think supports number 13 about bringing in tracking other types of employers.
Okay, so those that have chimed in on these four, and by the way, this is, this process is really working well. Kudos to all of you. Are you guys okay with putting this in as the placeholder? Before we vote, again, we're not writing it to final form. That is the fourth step in our four-step approach. That's where you take the top five and then you frame them into a smart goal. So my question is, is this okay to be the overarching category of these four? Knowing that you can rewrite it if it ends up at the top.
Love it.
Everybody good? Brilliant. Okay, so you keep acting like this. We we may get out earlier than thought. Okay, so eco dev. See, I'm kind of
No, that was climate plan.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Good point. And my thing froze. Yes. What, what I need to do is to go like this. And then here go eco dev. Whoops. Boom. That's what I meant to do. Okay. Brilliant. Now let me get, go clean this up here. Okay, nice work. So what are some other duplicates?
Some other, I'm looking at number five, number 19, number eight, number 11. Five, 19, eight, and 11 would all seem to come under municipal services, which is number five.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a crash there. Would you please give that to me again Jenny?
Five, 19, eight.
Did take my bottle.
And 11.
Nine, eight. Could you do them in order? Nine, eight?
Five, eight, 11, 19, five, eight, 11, and nine.
Get all those?
19.
Yeah, I think I got them.
You want to highlight 19?
Yeah, I already did.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, that's all right. You couldn't, you can't see it through the screen. I get it.
Sorry. They seem to come under five as the overarching one.
I would add number nine to that.
I would too.
Okay.
And number 18 maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that too.
That makes sense. Nice work Jenny. And you've got a lot of your colleagues saying, yeah.
I'm wondering if eight really goes better with three because it's about walkability.
Different subject.
Go ahead, Lee.
I kind of feel like eight and 16 kind of go together.
Yeah.
Eight, more sidewalks and reduce traffic congestion?
Yeah.
Kind of under livability. Hey, let's do this. Let's do this, everybody. Let's just, let's just eat this elephant one bite at a time. So let's just stick with the municipal services. And was that Fred? Who was talk, who was just talking about the traffic congestion and walkability?
That was me, Keith.
Keith, I'm sorry. So Keith, are you suggesting that this would be part of municipal services as well?
It could be. My thought is like the downtown area, I think if there were more sidewalks in areas that sidewalks don't exist, then people could walk more, which would reduce traffic.
Yeah, no, I get it. And I'm thinking that might fall better under the category of livability than under municipal services. But you guys can talk me out of it.
I agree. I think for now, if you just take out more sidewalks of that group.
I, I
Yeah.
More sidewalk, just, oh, I got you.
Take that out.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that we're, doesn't mean we're eliminating it from the list, but
It's just different.
It's a livability issue and we're going to get there. Okay, so we've got those. Provide efficient, more efficient and effective municipal services, fill gaps and public input. I can see where a lot of these would roll under a big one, increase communications, that would better understand community needs. That definitely is a duplicate. Develop a citizen complaint form. Yeah, those are all could be tactics under
Number five?
Yeah, provide more is what I think I forgot to write, efficient and effective municipal services. And again, this would just be a placeholder. It's not the last statement. So my question is, can I take these other four that are underneath it and put it in our other list?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lots of yeses. Is anybody, does anybody
Or tasks that would allow us to provide more efficient, effective services?
Right. Awesome. Absolutely fantastic.
Can we go on?
Uh, yeah, give me just once. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just cleaning this up.
But while you clean it up, I'll preface my, this comment. And you could tell I like this process because I'm talking a lot. But I, so I'm looking at things to add to number four. And I really can't. And I'd hate to, and that to me should float to the top. Whether it's got a partner or not, and the reason is nothing that we've listed so far is going to get done if we don't do number four first, the high priority.
I agree.
I agree.
I would agree with that. I agree.
So what are we agreeing to? There's no, no duplicates and we're leaving it there for the vote is I guess what I'm hearing.
I, I would argue that number 14 of piece of number four.
Thank you. I was just going to say that.
And I would say, address our staffing issues.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wordsmith later, but yeah, this is, okay, yeah, I completely get it. The D E I program would be under. And we probably want to so i- is that it? Just those two are, are ma- major staffer?
Well, the things we have on the list here, yes, but I think there's more issues that need to be dealt with when it comes to the staff.
Right. And as long as that surfaces as a goal, then your team can put work plans to address those issues.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So maybe it's something like, I'm just going to play around. Develop, develop a staff retention and attraction program. I'm just playing around.
That's what I was just going to say.
Cool. Cause it's a kind of a bigger thought and everything. Where's my HR person?
Right here.
Okay, Camille, is, is this a better overarching thing?
Yes.
Okay, so are you guys okay with me replacing, address staff issues with develop a staff for it? Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, great. And I, I am sure, whoops.
I, I think that what you wrote is good, but
I tell you what.
That's one thing to address the staffing issues with. There's other things to address the staffing issues with.
Oh, right. But they would be tactical and they would fall under the plan.
All right.
Yeah, no, I'm completely with you. And based on what I'm hearing from everybody. For some reason, my system's locking up. Let's try this one more time. There we go. Yeah. I mean, it goes to the top and we'll, we'll get into
Yeah, so I'm going to comment on this one just for a moment. A retention program can, can probably cover a whole bunch of the issues that we're talking about when it comes to employee morale, job satisfaction. Are they being a, a wellness program, a, a program to recognize their good work and all those things help us retain our staff. Attraction, that's number 14.
There you go. So I, I think what I'm hearing you saying is you're supporting this broader, more global theme to build programs under that are far more robust.
Correct.
Okay, so everybody okay for me to get rid of 14? Not rid of it. Excuse me, let me put it a different move.
Move it down below.
Yeah. That's what I meant to say. And obviously there's going to be a lot more than just this. Okay, wow. We are logging. Okay, any other duplicates?
Yeah, I would look at number six and number 10.
Yeah, I agree. Those fit together.
Yeah, talk that out. Share with your colleagues. What, what, what are you thinking there?
So the small town feel that we have is based upon the character of the way the streets are laid out, the way the buildings are built, the look of the buildings, the historic nature of a lot of the buildings. So if we can come up with a descriptor that does a better job of taking these two items and bringing them together, I think that would be good.
And would, would more sidewalks and reduced traffic congestion come under that as well?
Could I make a suggestion of having maybe just something overarching? And I'm just throwing this out there, but something about safe, livable and attractive neighborhoods? That kind of combines all of those. Someone could wordsmith that, but I'm just trying to get an overarching.
I think of the word neighborhood as a residential area and we're talking about character of downtown and architecture and those kinds of things.
Maybe community, maybe a livable, safe, attractive community because the sidewalks are safety. The attractiveness is the character, the livability is decreased traffic, safe ways to walk, sidewalk. I don't know, maybe it's too broad.
The, the intention of the focus on character retention and historic preservation was in relation to what Big Harbor has that other communities don't have. I think you know, all communities have neighborhoods and residential developments, but what they don't have is what Big Harbor has, which is you know, kind of the maritime, our architectural feel, walkable downtown, things like that, that our design manual really upholds.
Yeah.
And that was at least the, what I meant by 10.
How about like honoring our maritime character, why consciously embracing change? Cause the other one was like growth and responsibility. Something along those lines.
Honoring our maritime, what?
Character. Character.
While.
I'm consciously embracing change.
I think we have to be careful not to leave out uptown and Gig Harbor North in, in this. It seems like they seem to have been left out somewhere.
I can echoes, I can echo Jenny's comment there is that this is focused on one area, the harbor, which is clearly a pretty area, but North Gate Harbor and Uptown are just as much Gig Harbor as downtown. So I, I do like the embracing change. I think that's good.
Why don't we change the word feel on number six to character?
Yes.
Maintain, yeah.
I like that.
Small town character while growing responsibly.
I don't really think we need.
I just want to put out for the group.
Preservation.
Yeah, there's, there's multiple small towns in Washington. And so, you know, I think what, what we're talking about is like the character of Big Harbor, right?
I agree. I think it's important to call out because it is different and it is different in the downtown area. I mean, there's things we need to do citywide, but the downtown area is, does I think need a little bit of attention because it is kind of our iconic character.
Hey Lee, you said something, but I heard.
For Gig Harbor North or Uptown, we've, we've not included those folks anywhere in here, those neighborhoods.
Let's make sure we do that too.
Well, I don't, let me ask a question. Does maintain the small town character? Forget about the second thing. I mean, that isn't exclude anybody, does it?
No, that, that's true.
I mean, in the plan or in the, whatever that program is, and, and the more tactical details, you can call out all of the, the various areas. But also Lee said something and, um, there were a few of us talking and I know it's hard when we can't see hands.
What I said, what I said was maintain the small town character and historic preservation while still growing responsibly.
I think having that historic preservation piece in there is really important.
Yeah, I agree.
Then maybe, maybe we need something else for the rest of town. I mean, I agree with historic preservation downtown totally. We just don't want to leave out Gig Harbor North or, or Uptown.
I don't think anything there says.
I don't think anything's left out.
Not excluding anybody.
I think when, when I made the safe, livable, attractive community, I was trying to look for something overarching in where maintaining the character and historic preservation would be a, would be a thing that you do to maintain that. Does that make any sense? Like that would be an action item or should that be the priority?
Like it's overarching?
Yeah. I mean, that's just, that's just what I was going for and not to take away from that, that's still an, you know, super high priority. But that way we, we talk about the whole community. Just, it's just thinking out loud.
Well, and I will say, um, that remember eventually, um, we need to make these smart. This is, this one's going to be easier to make smart. This one's a little bit general. Sure. Why don't we do this? And because it's break time, why don't we go ahead and take number six? Just as a placeholder, take a short 10 minute break and then come back and finish that conversation. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
That's good.
So since we got almost all of this, we can get rid of that because almost everything here got put up here. Correct?
I'd rather leave that. Well, actually, yeah, we could do that.
Yep.
Yep.
Whoops. No, that's not what I wanted to do. Excuse me. What I wanted to do was this.
Now you've done it, Andrew.
But, but I do.
I'm just teasing.
Oh, well, I, I, so I'm, you know, I've got a little scar tissue there because I've done it many times. Unfortunately, but I'm glad that you're having fun with me. That means that you trust and like me. You know, the only, you only tease the people you really care about because if you're a little bit concerned, oh geez, are they going to take offense?
And all I can think of is it's safe.
Yeah. Oh, I did. I, I, that's so funny. You got that right, but, um, there's really no better way. I, 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 I can't feel more included and, and then when somebody kind of teases me because that means I'm part of the family. Okay, everybody, take a look at your watch. We're going to take, um, 12 minutes. See you all back in 11 minutes, 11 and a half minutes for, says to be back to finish this exercise at 2:30 and it looks like it's like, uh, 2:30 right now, maybe a half minute early. So, um, nice work. Really nice work. I, I don't know if you realize this, I was, you know, looking at, at, at the, the board and I got rid of the noise. I, I didn't take anything out that you haven't taken out. They didn't do anything without your permission. But I'll show you something I did do and it says, wow, they don't need to vote. They've already developed their five, uh, their five, uh, priority goals. Work on climate action plan. Obviously these aren't fully baked, uh, you know, we'll, we'll do the framing here. But that's one that, um, that's about the environmental stewardship. Develop a staff retention and attraction program. That's about municipal services. Provide more effective and efficient, uh, municipal services. That's municipal services, right? I mean, we can't, we can't do number four if, if we haven't already done number three, right? Chicken and egg. Uh, I'm channeling my inner Lee. Next, maintain, uh, the small town character and historical preservation while growing responsibly. I mean, that's livability all over it. And then, uh, maintain a plan to support and enhance um, a dynamic and robust, robust economy. That's our economic vitality. So I already played around with this. So this would fall under a, a dynamic and robust economy because those are funds. This traffic thing would fall under the livability. So would the sidewalks and so would the distance to parks. Anyway.
Infrastructure falls under economy.
Pardon me?
I'm not sure the infrastructure, the federal and state infrastructure funds falls under economy, but I agree that, that two, six and eight fall under livability.
Okay, uh, let's hear from some other folks.
Yeah, I don't know where to put that. Maybe nine falls under municipal services.
Yeah, because we're working with other local, uh, legislators to get that, to accomplish those things.
I would agree with that. Two, six and eight go under number five and number nine goes under number four.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Wow, that's really impressive. So you guys did better than I did. I already moved all of these just thinking that you might like to do that, but the one with the infrastructure, where did the infrastructure go?
Municipal service.
There it is. Uh, you want, that should be under muni though, right?
Yeah.
That's where I, that's where I, I was off. Okay, well, let's do it. Where is, there it is. Muni. Huh. I love playing those games just to see how close I get. Um, I love the way you guys did it a lot better, but essentially.
Would, would you go back down there and change the, it says interest station and make it say infrastructure?
Oh yeah, I, I will, I'll clean all of this up. Um, I promised to clean all of this up, Tony, before I write the report. I actually have a proofreader.
All right.
Yeah, if I stopped and repaired every word, we'd never get through it. But I, I get that, you know, it needs to be done. And so I promise I will do it. So anyway, son of a gun. Um, you guys just saved 15 minutes because we don't need to vote.
Go team.
Yeah, pretty stellar work. Hello. Yeah, go team is right. Um, excellent. So I'm going to take these out of green because you've done that. And I think I will, uh, come up for air again. People love it when I come up for air. Uh, you can tell I have a fairly active metabolism. I want to come up for air. In fact, I'm going to save that. Um, I'm going to turn that off. Um, yeah, I mean, you, you guys are, um, you guys are way ahead of schedule. I, I mean, like now I'm talking about getting done a half hour early, not five minutes early. That I, I don't take credit for it to you guys. So you've landed on, um, five categories. They absolutely 100% A, support, um, the, the vision statement. And B, they took your SWAT things under concern, right? Uh, the number one, um, strength was staff. And one of the concerns was that we're overworking them. They're overwhelmed. We're completely changing. So you, you pretty much have dealt, um, with just about everything with these five categories. And, and what we will talk about more and we do the wrap up. In fact, I'll let Tony, um, talk about this because th- this was his, this is, you know, what, what he was talking about and Tracy and I are going right on. Uh, but the idea of how we go from here to make sure nothing falls through the cracks and how the staff will put work plans together that are in support of each goal category, just like our goals are in support of our vision. I mean, everything is linear, linear, linear and connected. Talk good do I? What do you think? So, um, observations, comments, what do you think? What's going well? What are you concerned about? Hi, Mary.
Hi, Andrew. I'm, I'm, I remain concerned about staff workloads and even with these five basically bit, we had goals. I'm still worried about how we go from here to there. And I'm wondering if there is, if we're going to prioritize the five goals so that I guess I'm concerned that if we get to a point at the end of today that we go, here you guys. And I don't think that's, that's fair and I really don't.
No, that, that isn't the process. I, I appreciate the concern, but we have a whole section on staff. And so you're not going to be able to retain or attract staff, you know, if you don't have a good working culture, right? And if we don't fill positions that are empty, that keep from overloading the existing staff. Right. We, so the morale issue, the retention issue, everything that showed up on the SWAT thing as a threat or I'm in a weakness, everything you're talking about would be part of the work plan in support of that staff retention and attraction plan.
Right. And I guess what I'm saying is, it seems to me that, and, and I heard a lot of people saying too, that that's our number one goal. And I wonder if we need to, that's number one. So what are two, three and two, three, four and five?
So, uh, if you want to prioritize them, we certainly can. Typically we don't do that, uh, and I'll tell you why. And then if you still want to do it, we will, because this is your plan, not mine. The reason we don't is because, um, council, now obviously informed with staff's help, they've been a tremendous contribution, have identified the five top priority goal directions and categories. And then after that, it's the staff, you know, Tony and his directors will develop work plans for each one of those. And by the way, all of those work plans will go to council during study sessions. In fact, Tony even went as far as saying, hey, as organized as the staff is, we could probably get through, uh, the work plans for two goals in one study session. So I guess what I'm saying, um, uh, Mary is that there's a safety net there to, um, prevent what you're concerned about from happening. In other words, it's not going to fall through, um, it's not going to fall through, uh, the gaps here. What I think I hear you saying is in terms of priorities, maybe has more to do with sequence. In other words, if we don't fix the staff things first, we're not going to be able to do all the other work. Is that what you're trying to communicate? You're muted.
Yeah.
Darn it, I have, I have to put money in the fine jar.
You and me both. Uh, I always end up putting more money than anybody else. Tony, you had something to share.
Well, not really, but I'll go ahead.
Oh, somebody chimed in. I heard, I'm sorry, I heard, I, I heard a voice and I assumed given that we were talking about staff, it was you.
Yeah. Well, I, I will simply say that, uh, I would agree with, uh, your assessment that dealing with staffing issues uh, all around, uh, is very, very important and will allow us to work on and accomplish all the other, uh, all the other priorities.
Yeah, you know, it's one of those things, um, that actually is addressed in, you know, at a strategic level. It's addressed in your vision statement in terms of, you know, being a leader of municipal services. Well, you can't do that if you don't have, if you're not fully staffed and the morale and the culture. And by the way, a lot of you people said, a lot of people during this, and you'll read it, is that the culture and all of that that has caused poor staff morale has already been addressed and it's already getting better. So I want to be really clear on that. So obviously there have been things that have happened that have already started to lower some staff blood pressure. Does that mean that they're not overworked? Well, they are overworked. Every, a lot of people are saying so. Uh, and maybe that has to do with because we haven't been able to attract, uh, quality candidates to fill the vacancies. There's a lot of different things there, but I, I think you can trust your staff um, to put, your directors to put together action plans that will, um, add life vibrancy and accountability to each of your five priority goal categories.
And their action plans may result in a de facto prioritization of projects because it could be some of the stuff we've talked about could be worked on now with current staff and staffing workloads. Or they may say, we just don't have enough. We need to get more people. So I, I think Tony and Tracy are going to go back, check with the staff. They're the ones that have to now execute our goals, whichever they are, the five and all the sub-goals that were included in them. Uh, but I, I think it's a great idea. I think we have a good start today and I'm looking forward to seeing whatever work plans come out of this. I'm excited.
Well, and that's, that's kind of Tony's point, at least when he was educating me, is that, um, this process doesn't end at four o'clock today. Or 3:30 or when, whenever we get done. Um, but, um, those action plans are going to go before council. So you will know what's going on. And I really appreciate what Roger said because there's other concepts when you're talking about these things and it's, you know, more uh, 501 than 101 in terms of planning, project management and strategy. And that is there are interdependencies with several of these moving parts. And also there are predecessors and there are successors. And to Roger's point, there are some things that can happen simultaneously. So what you're saying, Mary, is right on. There are some things that will have to happen before other things that can happen in project management. They're called predecessors. And then you have to look at the interdependencies and the interdepartmental linkage to make sure that you're able to mitigate any unintended consequences. And from how I've gotten to know, uh, Tony and Tracy, um, I think we're in really good hands. Um, so, well, and I, I've, I've got to know these directors and all of these, uh, council, including uh, for new council members. I, I think you're all in really good shape. Um, better shape than a lot of cities I've worked with. So anyway.
So are you saying that they're not going to be priorities? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm not saying anything. I was just sharing some best practices.
Okay, is, so are we having priorities?
Ask your colleagues.
I, at least.
I think Roger was saying it's going to happen automatically.
Yeah, I, I think priorities will, some priorities will be set when Tony and uh, Tracy chat with the staff and they're going to say, oh, what did you guys do? I can't do it. Or they're going to say, that's an easy one. We can do that now. They may come back via their work plans and that may, might sit kind of, again, I use that word, a de facto priority. If Katrina says, I can work on this, but I can't work on this until I get additional people. Well, that thing where it says I get additional people has to drop down a bit. We move another priority up into that. Jeff says, well, I can work on this. Then he may say, I can't work on this until I get additional people. So things will get ordered just by what we can and can't do. And then they'll come back with us on that and then we'll have that opportunity. I'd hate to prioritize anything now. And they're shaking their head saying, we just can't do it right now because I don't have the staff or they're saying, yeah, I can do it. But I can't do these other three things.
So I'm not talking about today, but I am wondering, uh, are. So I'm not talking about today, but I am wondering, uh, are we going to be having any work sessions on any of this? Uh. Are we?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't make that clear, uh, Jerry, Jenny, she, I I've called her Jerry three times. Fortunately, the first two were in private. And she smacked me around a little bit. Jenny, I'm sorry. So yes, to be clear. Uh, the work plans that are developed by your your staff are going to come before council. So nothing's going to happen without your blessing.
You know, I I hate to be that guy again. But these staffing issues didn't start yesterday. And if we don't have a priority. And make it a priority, they're not going to get resolved. And it and the idea that now we're going to have a committee and we're going to look at it, we're going to set priorities and we're going to have a meeting every.
Well, I I don't understand. What committee are you talking about, Lee?
If we have to have a work committee or a a work session. And we're going to have one next week and then two weeks from now, it's it's like a, we should declare an emergency. And do something immediately instead of just uh, not creating a priority. It well, because nothing is going to get done until we increase our staff. We have approximately, you know, ninety nine to a hundred and twenty five. Employees that should be working for us. We've had twenty four open positions for six or seven months. And we get no communication about what's being done about it. So we need to set a priority and we need to do it quickly.
So Lee, are you um, are you kind of in Mary's camp in that you'd like to prioritize the five goals right now?
Absolutely.
Let's do this. We we have plenty of time. I mean, we're talking about um. Uh, a ten minute exercise. It's the nominal group technique. Everybody votes. So let me do this. Uh, if you would like to take, you know, ten fifteen minutes to prioritize your five goals, first, second, third, fourth and fifth. Um, give me a thumbs up. If you're okay with it, give me a thumb sideways. If you think it's busy work and you don't want to do it, give me a thumbs down. So I'm going to ask everybody to do a thumb and I'm going to ask you to leave them there so I can count. Thumbs now, please.
I would like to know what our staff says about this. I see.
Take a look at what they're saying with their thumbs.
They're saying they want to prioritize.
Yeah.
And and I do, I do want to make mention that we have made this a priority already to onboard our. Our staff, just so you know. HR is working extremely hard and I did ask Camille at some point today to give you all an update on the positions that have been. Um, filled or have been offered so that council does know currently as of today where we stand on positions. That doesn't have to happen right now. It can happen later. But um, I understand, I mean, I already know where this priority is going to land and I agree with you one hundred percent. But I want you to understand that it is already a priority. So don't think it's not. It is already being worked on. And I agree, the communication needs to be better between administration, staff and council. So you all know. Where we are in these hiring processes that that does need to improve and and we and we know that. So we're working on that. But um, this this is already a top priority. So I just wanted to make mention of that and then. We can get into this and I'll get, we'll get an update from Camille at the end about current positions that are open.
An update at the end of what?
At the up um, at the end of our exercise or at the end of the retreat. I'll leave time during my closing remarks for that update if need be.
Oh, okay. Because I I did, I want to make sure we get everybody out on time and I didn't have that on my agenda. So let's go ahead and jump right in.
I'm wondering if people really care about prioritizing all of these things or if people really care about just making sure that staff retention and recruitment is number one priority, which it sounds like it is to the city. Is that, that's what I I think I'm hearing. I don't know if we need to take time to prioritize all the rest of them.
I I think you're right, Robin. I would uh. If as long as everyone understands what our number one priority it is, I would rather leave the time uh, for Mayor Markley and. Uh, HR director to give some reports at the end of this session.
I I would agree with that. I would also say, though, that the municipal services is number two. Because I think that we need to solve those before we can do any of the enhancing and increasing.
Well. I I think.
Hey, guys, I'm going to jump in. Timeout, timeout. You guys said you wanted to vote and now you're 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 kind of doing this ad hoc. Trust me, we're just going to vote, okay? Um, there isn't a clear thing here, but I got a clear process. We're all going to vote. So I want you to all take a look at this. I'm taking numbers away. Um, what I'd like you to do is look at these five and every one of you get to choose two. Everybody has two votes. You're talking about eighteen people and uh, the votes will prioritize the whole thing. So I'd like you to all write down your first and second choice. And to be clear, you're not all going to have the same first and second choice. That's why we'll be able to prioritize it. So please take just a minute right now. And the reason I ask you to do that. Is I don't want you to change your votes based on somebody else's vote, because that's essentially gaming the system. So we're going to vote. I mean, we could keep talking, oh, let's just do this and some, no, I don't want to do that. Let's just vote. Let's just get it done. I got all the thumbs up. You're reverse engineering. I'm going to go this to the reverse engineering. So everybody think about two, write them down. Actually, you know what?
Are we just doing the numbers for these? Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. So you're going to say, my first priority is number two. My second priority is number uh, four. And so everybody's going to get two votes and you're going to thank you whoever said that.
Andrew, Andrew.
Yeah.
I'd like to suggest we each take three votes.
Okay, well, that'll take quite a bit longer.
The reason for that is I can almost guarantee you what everyone's number one and number two is going to be. And I think we need to know what everyone's number three is going to be.
Okay, everybody gets three votes. So I want everybody to write down the three that are most important to them, but write them in priority order. Because these votes are weighted. Your first place vote counts as three points. Your second place vote counts as two points and your third place vote counts as one point. And and just trust me, the weighted process always works. It's a best practice. Let's just do it and and not analyze it. So has everybody had a time to kind of get their um, one, two, three? I'm going to give it another minute. Whoops. I need to, you need to see that. I'm going to give it another minute because I didn't hear anybody say they've had enough time. Let's just take a, let's take another minute. Everybody write down. Uh, their first, second and third choice. And all you're going to do is say, my first choice and then give me the line number. My second choice is and my third choice and I'll do the math real time. And you guys will watch me to make sure I don't screw it up because I have.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Of course, Roger.
When we vote and the priorities, these top five are prioritized. What does that exactly mean? That we have to, if it's in priority order and we vote for it, does that mean that if, say, we have to complete priority number one? Before we do number two and then not complete number two?
No, it it would never work that way. We're doing this, Roger, because there is not a consensus on doing it the way you suggested. So um.
I didn't suggest that. I was asking if that's what it's going to be. That wasn't my suggestion.
No, no, I was talking about the suggestion you made before. I I thought your suggestion before was very lucid and that is the priorities will happen automatically. Yeah, I was actually in your camp.
Good.
Yeah, no, I was, I was in your camp, um, but I I couldn't sell it. So we're going to get, we're high centered and so this is what we do. And we're going to follow Tony's recommendation and everybody gets three votes. And then let's just move off and then frame these things so we can finish and then trust our staff to come back with work plans. That you all, you will all see and you'll be able to make, you know, ask questions and kind of make recommendations, et cetera. So what I'm going to do.
Andrew, I just want to make two, two comments. One, uh, whatever priority we end up with, it basically shows staff that if we are. Um, if we don't have the resources that we need to do all five. Then we know where to concentrate until we do get the resources we need to do all five. And second, don't forget this is a two year plan, not a one year plan.
Are we working off the numbers of the category frame top five?
Right here.
One, two, three, four, five.
Got it. Yeah, you're picking your favorite three and you're going to say, uh, Lee, my first choice is um, number two. My second, yeah, that, so that's how we're going to do it.
So are we ready? Just is everyone got their choices?
Okay, to make this faster, I'm going to call everybody out and I'm going to go in reverse order of the order that I got uh, originally. So um, I'm going to start with Stacy.
Uh, two, three, four.
Two is your first, three is your second and four is your third. Is that correct? This one's your first choice. Is that correct, Stacy? Yeah, remember they're weighted. So your first choice gets three points, your second choice gets two points and your third choice gets one point. So the way I understood it, this is first, this is second, this is third. Great. Okay, Matt, you're up.
Three, four, one.
You see how I'm actually doing the math live?
Yes, I think you did maths correctly.
Matt, what was your first choice?
Three, four, then one. And I think you went to number two instead of one.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for catching that. Okay, now we're back to where we were. You said three was your first choice, right?
Correct.
Well, I made that five, so that was correct. And your second choice was four?
Correct.
Well, that becomes a three and your third choice is.
Go up one line.
Oh, it's number one?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I did misunderstand that. Thank you for catching that, everybody. Okay, next up is Laura.
All right, I'm going to say uh, two, five, three. Did not mean to say two, five, three. Came out that way.
So your first choice was um, two. Your second choice was what?
Five.
And then three. Okay. Did I do that right, everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so again, you're giving me a first, second and third and do it in line of the numbers. So great, okay. Thanks, Laura. Next up is um, Fred.
Uh, two, three, four.
Two. Three. Four. Well, that makes things easy. Okay, um, thank you, Fred. Next up is Katrina.
Two, four, three.
Thank you. Um, next up is Camille.
Two, three and four.
Two. Three. And four. Thank you. Um, next up is Josh.
I have two, four and three.
Two. Four and three. Awesome. Okay, after Josh is Jeff.
Two, three. And four.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up. Was that Jeff I just called?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Dave.
Three, two, four.
Thank you, sir. Tony.
Two. Three. Five.
Awesome. Okay, now we move to council. I'm going to start with Mary.
Two. Four. Three.
Excellent. Thank you, Seth. Seth, if you're with.
Money jar, two, three, four.
Two, three, four. Okay. You're still not uh, as high as I am on the money.
Hey, also, just just so you know, I set up a quick Excel thing too. So I'm I'm tracking this with like, you know, the formulas and all that. So if for some reason we have a mishap. I'll I'll have to back up.
Great. And we're also recording this session too, so.
I know, I just rather not get stuck in in our math at the end or something, so.
I got you. Okay, uh, Roger.
One, two, three.
One. Two, three. Excellent. Um, next up is Robin.
Two. Three. Four.
Awesome. Um. Okay, that was Robin, right? And I did, Roger. Okay, Lee, you are up, sir.
Two. Three. Five.
Thank you. Jenny.
One. One and one.
You can't put all your dots on one. On one, though. You have to separate them on three different uh, strategies. Otherwise, that'd be gaming the system. So I have your first choice on one.
Second choice is two.
This is your second choice here?
Two.
Got it. And your third choice?
Would be three.
Got it. Okay. Alrighty, Brenda.
Um, two. Three. And five.
Okay, uh, mayor, bring us home. Tracy.
Okay, two, four, three.
Great, okay.
I think he left me out, Andrew. This is Keith. Um, mine would be.
Keith, I am so sorry. I I'm so glad you spoke up. I I apologize.
My numbers would be two. One. Five.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. I did not mean, hello, did somebody else?
Stacy didn't vote either, did she?
She did.
Yeah, Stacy was the first to vote. She was the first person I called on.
Okay.
But I'm glad you're checking. I mean, we all know that.
So how's the math, Seth? You check him out?
Yeah, one second here. I'm just doing the last part of the formula, but uh. Yeah, everything's good. Exactly what I have. And now I know all of your votes. Yeah.
There you go. Probably not real surprising. So um. That is uh, the priority. And I'm going to keep that priority in a different column because I need that. Whoops, darn, doggone it. Okay. Here we go. I I did keep those. It's just uh, um, it's way over there. Okay, so now our last uh, step. And uh, we've got about um, I mean, if we're going to do the whole four o'clock time and give um, Tracy's people enough time to actually report out. Um, we'll want to go quickly, but the idea is framing. Now, so now, now I will say that not every goal can be smarted. It's like when you maintain a small town character and historical preservation while still growing responsibly. Um, the the accountability and the measurability happen at the tactical level. Okay, right. You can see that um, quantifying this and establishing a quantifiable target is a bit difficult. So I don't want you to hold yourself to unrealistic um, unrealistic criteria, but the idea is that we would smart it. And so uh, while they're not all measurable, they're already time bound. Your staff will organize them. Your staff will organize them based on your priorities. And in terms of how realistic they are, you would, you would determine that based on the work plans. So in terms of making them specific and clear, let's start with develop a staff retention and attraction program. Is that fully baked or do we need to do any wordsmithing?
I think silence tells you it's good.
Yeah, I, we can attract people. I don't know if it's necessary, but I'd like to, is, is it a good idea to put on something like that to actually hire and onboard people? I mean.
That's very tactical. And I think that that would, I think your HR person would tell you that that's going to happen.
I think.
What's that?
That would help quantify it.
Um, okay, what would the quantity be?
Well, we have, if we have X open positions, did we hire them or not?
So let's let your colleagues chime in. Do you want to assign a metric and a target for this or do you want that to be in the work plans?
I'd like to advocate for it being in the work plan.
Okay.
Because I think that Camille knows the steps that need to happen to make all of this happen.
Great. Let me hear from some more folks.
Yeah, I would agree as well. I would like to just see Camille present this. I know there's already been a, a lot of work being done on it, but seeing something, you know, formalized as far as the strategy and timeline and what's, what's attainable, what's realistic for us with these amount of open positions? So.
Okay.
I also want to look at morale and that kind of thing as well. I think it's just as important as attracting people for open positions.
Well, morale is front and center of retention. So that'll end up in the work plan.
Right.
Yeah, I think also with those surveys and such too, would give us a better sense. A lot of KPIs come out of that, right, on, on how people are performing. So that's another, not just performing, but how they're feeling in their job. So I would agree. I know that was done, was it about a year ago? And so, you know, doing those regular health checks and having a planned health check. Sorry, using some different language there, but having that across, you know, I would keep it as the same survey. Maybe there's a few things that change, providing some open-ended feedback as well, I think is very helpful.
Okay, so do I need to go through doing a thumb exercise or are you guys ready to move to number two?
I'm ready. I can live with what everyone commented on.
Cool. Thank you, Lee. By the way, Lee is storing up some serious, some serious capital and I, I mean that in a positive way. Okay, provide more efficient and effective municipal services. It's very similar to number one in that it's dead-set focused on municipal services and it's talking about improvement. And again, the details will come out in the work plan. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions about number two?